Well, thanks so much for the invitation. We've been here a few times, but I don't think we've ever had a joint session. Last time we were together was for the skate pack process, and that was way back in Kaiser Station. Where's Vicki? Right, Vicki? And we still like you. So it's great to be here together to talk about this issue. I appreciate the offer.
Great, and we really do welcome the Kaiser City Council. And I would like Kaiser City Council members to introduce yourselves, and then we'll have the Salem Council members introduce themselves. Would you like to start?
Brandon Smith.
Mark Killier.
Joe Aigley.
Kathy Clark.
Jim Taylor.
Thank you. Let's see. Dan?
Dan Clem.
Cheryl Thomas.
Diana Dickey.
Rich Klaussen.
Brad Nankie.
Laura Tesler, number two.
And Chuck Bennett is here. He had to dash back out to get something maybe from the car, and he'll be right back in. I wanted to ask Dan Clem if he would like to say a few words this evening. He's been working very diligently on this issue. Dan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilor Clem?
Madam's mayors and fellow councilors for the Salem-Kaiser area. This is an air shed, the Salem-Kaiser area, within their urban growth boundary, and that will both Salem and Kaiser share. And I've been involved with representing both communities, or actually all three communities, to include Turner, on the greenhouse gas issue for about the last almost two years, to include the legislation that was passed last session under Senate Bill 1059. So it's my pleasure to ask for this joint work session and bring together both councils and have DLCD folks give us a good briefing on what it all means. State legislation has already been passed, which requires us to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Greenhouse gases are, by some folks, attributing to the diminishment of the ozone layer. So I know that I share the concerns that my neighbors have. Anything we can do to reduce pollution and emissions, no matter what type they are, is always a good thing. So within the Salem-Kaiser-Turner area, we have the issue before us in that the state legislature has mandated that we reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So with that, I've been involved with it for about the last two years, but right now the Target Rule-Making Advisory Committee, did I say that right? The Target Rule-Making Advisory Committee is concluding its recommendations to the Department of Land Conservation and also ODOT to set those targets, reduction targets, which take the form of many actions, reducing vehicle miles traveled, smarter land use planning, and a number of other things. So we'll get a brief description of that tonight. I think the thing that is most compelling is that the climate is changing, whether you attribute that to cars, or industry, or just the natural evolution of what nature is going through. It is changing, and I think the whole idea of a strategy for Oregonians to adapt to it, regardless of what's causing it, is one that I think will become more interest to our citizens and we as their representatives. I want to take this time to thank a couple of people who've been involved for the last two years with me. Councilor Kathy Clark, representing the city of Kaiser, has been there tirelessly on a number of transportation issues, to include this one. And also Mike Jaffe with the Council of Governments. Mike, thank you very much. With that, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Bob Courtwright with the Department of Land Conservation.
Can I interject for just a second? I do apologize. I wanted to introduce and thank Commissioner Sam Brentano is here, and I wanted to particularly say, you know, it's wonderful that Salem and Kaiser can work together. And here we have a county commissioner who's taken time to come over. He said just to observe. Sam, would you like to say anything?
Can I talk from here?
Yes.
I worry about so many things, as I said in the paper, and Tim didn't quite get it right. But one of those things is whether you really have successfully make a difference. Dan is touching on it. My concern is if I make a statement, if Oregonians didn't drive for a year, drive anything, the world wouldn't even know it. So then I ask myself, so how much are you willing to spend for that lack of recognition and lack of influence? Are you willing to change your lifestyle, your economics, jobs, everything that goes with it? And that's my concern. So I guess you can say that this commissioner is dragging his feet. Now you're concerned. I'm sorry to start at that point.
With that introduction, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Mayors, councilors, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to tell you a little bit about, you can see the topic here, is scenario planning and targets. And it's part of the state's effort to respond, as Counselor Clem indicates, to climate change. And I'd like to give you a little bit of background on, I think, what the overall state effort is about, and then get into a little bit more detail about both scenario planning and targets. And maybe to allay the commissioner's concern, and I suspect all of your's concern, is, well, what does this mean in terms of rules? And I think you know, the Land Conservation and Development Commission and the land use program sets rules that guide local comprehensive plans and zoning. And I want to let you know, this rulemaking is a little bit different. What we're setting is targets that would be used to guide development of plans to explore how land use might change. There's nothing in the legislation that is in place at this time that either requires scenario planning or meeting these targets. It's part of exploring what it would take to accomplish greenhouse gas emission reductions, and then evaluating whether or not that is something that has costs and benefits for Oregon communities. So let me begin by giving you a little bit of background on where we are in Oregon on climate change and the state program to deal with that. Oregon scientists are just now in the process of translating the national and international studies about how climate is changing to the kinds of effects that we can expect to see in Oregon over the next 100 years. And this graphic indicates, the red dots you can see there, indicate changes that we've already seen over the last century in average temperatures in Oregon. In short, things are getting warmer here. And as we look forward to the future, we can expect Oregon to get warmer as a result of the kinds of change in climate that we expect over the next century. And the projections are that our climate will continue to warm, our average temperatures will increase on the order of four to nine degrees. And that's kind of the broad range that has been established. That has some pretty significant impacts if you start to think about it. And the projections are that we will probably get as much rainfall as we currently do, or as much precipitation, but that the form of that precipitation will change. And this graphic, and I'm sorry it's not a little bit clearer, illustrates what the snowpack looks like in the Oregon Cascades over various scenarios into the future. And you can see, basically, that we have pretty heavy snowpacks under current conditions, under the reference kind of conditions, but if you look on into the future, you see much less in the way of April snowpack in the Cascades. And I think as folks who run municipal water systems, you have a sense of the significance of snowpack to communities and to the state.
Hey, Bob. Just want to give folks a reference point. Reference is the baseline, but in fact, this is the western side
That's right.
of the Cascades, which is where Salem gets its water supply from.
Excellent point, Dan. Thank you. So those kind of changes translate into changes into the Oregon that we see and that our children and grandchildren will see. The dark green in the map in the upper left, you know, gives you a good picture of western Oregon and the kind of temperate forests we have now, what I would call the Douglas Fir forests. And if you look at the changes in temperature and rainfall, you see western Oregon, that dark green, basically being replaced by lighter green, which is much more like the ponderosa pine forest of central Oregon. So pretty dramatic changes in the kind of vegetation that we're likely to have in Oregon. It also relates to the risk of forest fires. The red indicates increased risk of forest fires, again, due to those drier kinds of conditions. And finally, that translates into changes for agriculture, that we go from basically more, and this is in the wine industry, of very well-suited to Pinot Noir and lighter grapes, to, you know, being more like California, northern California, in terms of the kinds of agriculture we have. And that's just one of the agricultural industries that would be affected. So you can see, it will cause changes that we have to adapt to. And I point these out mostly to indicate that we have an overall
You just need to close up.
Close that. Excuse me. Thank you. So basically, we have to deal with the fact that our climate is changing, and the state is in the process of developing a plan on how we will adapt to the change that we're already expecting to experience.
Bob, on that last slide, I got to jump in, because I've spent hours on this stuff. We go from Pinot Noir grapes to Merlot grapes, is how it was described.
That's right.
So if, in fact, over the next 30 to 50 years, there's a four-degree shift, essentially, it tells all of the vineyards, you're not going to have any choice but to change. Is that the implication here?
That's right. There are changes that agriculture, cities, and that we'll all have to deal with as a result of the change in climate. And the state is doing a better job, or is in the process of trying to estimate with more specificity what the changes are that we can expect and how to adapt to them. So this isn't just about reducing greenhouse gas emissions, it's dealing with the change that we're going to have to deal with in any event. But the state is also interested in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So if you look at that band into the future of a four-to-nine degree increase, we'd like to minimize the increase in global temperatures. So the state, in 2007, the legislature adopted broad goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. By last year, to stop the growth in emissions; by 2020, to reduce it by 10 percent; and then over time, by 2050, to achieve a 75 percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And we're looking at all sectors, but what the targets deal with is the role of transportation. And transportation is a pretty significant contributor. Just over a third of our greenhouse gas emissions come from the transportation sector. And a significant portion of those come from light vehicles, so that's cars, passenger cars and trucks, about 20 percent of our greenhouse gas emissions. So the targets, again, are try to achieve a 75 percent in the reduction of emissions from light vehicles. Well, there are a couple of factors that affect what the future looks like. The first one in looking into the future is the fact that there will be more Oregonians. Between 1990, which again is our base here, and 2035, we expect about 80 percent population growth. So that's going to drive up emissions. That makes our target for achieving reductions even more difficult. But the good news is that we can expect technology, improvements in vehicle technology and fuels, to significantly reduce the amount of greenhouse gas emissions. The average car today gets on the order of about 20 to 24 miles per gallon. The expectation is the federal government will extend CAFE standards, the vehicle fuel economy standards, so that the average car gets on the order of 50 to 60 miles per gallon in 2035. That change alone will significantly reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. But it's not likely to get us all the way there. It will get us most of the way there. And that's really what the targets are about, is what remains to be done to reduce emissions to achieve our desired reduction in 2035. So the targets relate to two bills, House Bill 2001 from the 2009 session and Senate Bill 1059 from the 2010 session. And they call for ODOT and the Transportation Commission to develop a state strategy to deal with the transportation sector, and for metropolitan areas to consider scenario planning. And the difference is, House Bill 2001 requires the Portland Metropolitan Area to engage in scenario planning to meet the targets. For the other metropolitan areas, again, there's currently not a requirement to do scenario planning to meet the targets. So the statewide transportation strategy, as I mentioned, will be developed and adopted by the Transportation Commission. It will cover the entire state, and not just light vehicles, but other modes of transportation. And it will make detailed recommendations about the state policies that will be in place to try to achieve that target. We think that's important for the other part of this component, because it creates a foundation for what metropolitan areas might need to do. That is, what kind of funding, or other incentives, or other programs would the state have in place by 2035 to encourage other modes of transportation or reduced vehicle travel? So the other half is metropolitan scenario planning. And again, we think it's about estimating what kind of changes to land use and to transportation patterns in metropolitan areas would be needed to meet these targets. Again, it's not a requirement to actually make these changes to plans, it's really to say, what would it take us to get there? So it would explore different combinations of land use and transportation, find out which combinations were best, and at the end, it would result in selecting a preferred alternative. Again, we think that is intended primarily to inform a discussion at the state level about how we best meet those greenhouse gas emission reduction targets. What role can reducing emissions from light vehicles through changes to land use and transportation make in achieving this objective?
Currently, Metro is the only organization required to implement it.
That's correct. So let me say a little bit more about scenario planning and what it involves. And I think the short story here is, you're going to find a lot of these things are things that you're already familiar with and already doing in your communities. So in a lot of ways, it's building on what we are already doing. And when we compare where we are to other states that are also dealing with this issue, we have a leg up in terms of our experience in doing land use and transportation planning. So it really looks at different ways that we can accommodate expected population and employment growth. And so on the land use side, it looks at things that we've been doing, like infill and redevelopment, more mixed use and transit-oriented development, higher densities, and thinking about ways that we can reduce the need for urban growth and expansion. On the transportation side, it really means expanding transportation options that allow people to get around and generate fewer greenhouse gas emissions, more incentives for use of electric vehicles and efficient modes of transportation, expanding bike and pedestrian networks, transit, and managing parking. Together, we think those things can significantly reduce greenhouse gas emissions. But we think that this is really more than just about reducing greenhouse gas emissions, whereas an opportunity for communities to look not just at reducing greenhouse gas emissions, but addressing other important needs and issues. And I've listed four here. The first is changing housing needs. We're dealing with a pretty substantial demographic change in our communities over the next 20 years, as we get older and as household sizes get smaller. So it's an opportunity to think about different ways to meet housing needs. Energy prices and the cost of transportation are significant for Oregon households. They're the second biggest household expense. About 20 percent of our income goes to transportation costs. As we face increased energy costs, reducing energy costs is something that we would hope to address through this process. We certainly want to look at ways that we meet our economic development needs in Oregon communities. And finally, we think it's a way to look at ways we can make healthier communities, address the obesity epidemic that is costing our nation billions of dollars a year, and to promote healthier, active lifestyles. And as I mentioned, we think this really, in Oregon, is a way to build on efforts that are currently underway. So to the extent that you've done things that move in this direction, you're already on the course to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We think it's really just about dialing up that effort to look at other things that we could do to accelerate those efforts. So just a little bit more, and this confirms, I think, what Counselor Clem mentioned about kind of the schedule for doing scenario planning. At this time, only the Portland Metropolitan Area is required to do scenario planning to meet the targets that will be set by LCDC, and that will be by 2012. They're required to select a preferred alternative by 2014, and I think you know the legislature will meet between those times, so we would expect additional guidance. Eugene Springfield area is required to do scenario planning, but is not required to meet these targets. Just a little different treatment there. And for our other metropolitan areas, including Salem and Kaiser, there's currently not a requirement to do scenario planning. It's something that we would hope to engage you in, and the state is interested in providing resources to assist with. And in that regard, the state has done several other things to move this along. Earlier this month, we submitted a report to the legislature that estimates the cost of conducting scenario planning and possible revenue sources to support that. We're in the process with ODOT and with the other metropolitan areas in developing pipelines to assist with scenario planning. And we're also working on developing a toolkit of specific actions that can reduce greenhouse gas emissions, so that you can borrow from proven examples in other communities to address these needs.
I'm sorry, did you have the dollar figure of the cost?
The cost estimate that is included in the report is between $250,000 and $1 million, I think $1.5 million for each metropolitan area. We have five smaller metropolitan areas in Oregon, so they are Salem-Kaiser, Eugene Springfield, which are the two larger, Corvallis, Bend, and Medford, or the Rogue Valley. So there's a range of costs that are associated with that. And the other thing is, we think we understand that we need more details about what the targets are and the details of scenario planning to give you a really specific estimate. So that's kind of the general ballpark. So I think I have just one more slide, and that's just to let you know the next steps. And if you've been listening carefully, you noticed I haven't said a lot about what the target is likely to be in terms of percentages. And the reason is, we're dating a report from our sister agencies, that's ODOT, the Department of Environmental Quality, and the Department of Energy, to give us an estimate of what future technology is likely to deliver by 2035. We'll look at that increment in setting the targets. As Dan mentioned, our Rule Advisory Committee is meeting. They have two meetings between now and the end of March to develop a recommendation that will go to the Land Conservation and Development Commission. And the legislation directs our commission to adopt these rules by June 1st, so you can see we've scheduled a final hearing by our commission on May 19. So I think that's most of what I wanted to cover, and I think Jamie was probably going to take over here and field your questions, and I'm betting on her.
Hi, I'm Jamie Damon with the National Policy Consensus Center at Portland State, and I've been facilitating the Rule-Making Advisory Committee and assisting LCDC in this endeavor. Mayor Peterson and I talked a little bit about how to run the work session, and the emphasis is on informality. We really just want to give you all an opportunity to ask questions of Bob, but get your input about, you know, what we're trying to do here and where you're at. Mayor Peterson has also indicated that after we hear from all the councilors, that if there are folks in the audience who have questions who'd like to weigh in, we would like to entertain your comments as well. So with that, and I also want to offer my forgiveness, I won't know all of your names, and so I'll do my best to put you on board about who's speaking next.
Right. Perhaps if people could just identify themselves when they do ask you a question.
That would be great.
That would be good.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Clem?
Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Jamie. I want to make sure that the context of what the targets will be is well-known by all of us in the region. We're talking essentially, and the legislation speaks to this, so Bob, correct me if I'm wrong. It says, "Taking into account new technologies, population changes or shifts, and one or two other things, you will reduce greenhouse gas emissions to a certain percentage." In the next month, we're going to set that percentage. And we're going to do it through two ways. The legislation talks about reducing vehicle miles traveled, which means, for this bubble we call the Salem-Kaiser UGB, if we're driving 20 billion miles a year, and they want us to reduce greenhouse gas emissions or vehicle miles traveled by 10 percent of that, then that means, if it ever does become law, or in rule, we'll have to limit driving to some degree, or find ways to encourage alternative forms of transportation, which is really kind of what we're doing now, trying to support transit and some other things. So while the rule, the target rule that's being created is a reduction percentage, it does not state you'll reduce driving. It simply says you use two things to do: reduce your emissions, that is, do what you can to find alternatives to reduce vehicle miles traveled. That doesn't mean you can't drive as much, just means you've got to find other forms of getting folks around to try to hit those reduction targets, and to do what Bob referred to as scenario planning, which is land use planning, which is something that we've struggled with, oh, for the last 10 years. But it really is about vehicle miles traveled and land use planning. Those are the two main vehicles that the legislation speaks to in reducing the greenhouse gas emissions. It also includes Turner. I don't know how Turner does that, but obviously, in this bubble of the Salem-Kaiser UGB, it speaks to the urban area, and that includes Turner, by the way, the boundaries are set. So I wanted to make sure I added that to the information.
That's pretty much right. I'd make one clarification, though, Dan, and that is, the targets will be for greenhouse gas emission reductions. And there's obviously a close correlation between the number of vehicle miles that are driven and the emissions that you get out of them. But in terms of what, the kinds of actions that you'll be able to consider, it will be things that reduce vehicle miles traveled, but also things that would reduce greenhouse gas emissions beyond that. So, for example, if you had programs that accelerated the adoption of electric vehicles above and beyond what we expect to be accomplished through, you know, in the marketplace or as a result of state programs, that's something that you would be able to get credit for. So it's basically, the targets, again, are for greenhouse gas emission reductions. You're right, that's mostly how you keep VMT from growing or reduce it slightly, but it's also other things that you would do to offset greenhouse gas emissions.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Kathy Clark. Bob's heard some of this before at OMPAC, but I wanted to share with you some of the ideas and conversation we had there a couple of weeks ago. One of my concerns is that many of our transportation system plans already have components that would reduce vehicle miles traveled, if only we had the money to implement them. The vast majority of Kaiser's transportation system plan is bike pit. And we have to compete on a statewide level to get those few dollars to get some of those connecting sidewalks built, some of those connecting bike lanes built. Same here in Salem. If we want people to take transit, they're not going to stand in the mud. They're not going to walk through mud to get to those transit stops. So we already have many things in place, and what I asked Bob at that point was, will there be, within the scenario planning, bridge tools that help bridge our plans into what the scenario plans are already calling for, so we don't have to re-study what we've already done and know that we need to do? We just need the money to do that, to build those sidewalks, those bike lanes, et cetera. So that was just one thing. If you want to respond to that, then I have a follow-up, if I may.
It seemed like more than one thing, but a couple of thoughts. First is, remember, ODOT's going to be doing a statewide strategy, and I think one of the things that they will be looking at is how the state funds its transportation system, and so additional resources. I think an important role for scenario planning, again, is figuring out what it would take. And part of what it would take is, well, what would it cost in terms of the resources that we would need to realize this? And I think Counselor Clark is exactly right. We know the sorts of things that it would take. A lot of those things are already in our plans, and so it's identifying that as probably a need to get there. So when we all report back to the legislature about what it would take to accomplish these goals, I would expect that's going to be a good part of the message there. And I think the place that we will start is to do a base case or a reference case to check and see how far our existing plans get as toward meeting those targets. Because I think, again, given everything that we've done, there's a good reason to think that with vehicle technology, we'll be getting pretty close, or we'll be ahead of most other states in achieving reductions.
And if I may, with a follow-up, please?
Yes, sir.
My other question was the measurables. Are we looking only at carbon dioxide, or are we also looking at other greenhouse gases as a whole when doing this kind of planning? And the reason I ask that is because what we're looking at coming out of the tailpipes is different than some other major greenhouse gases that we have here in the valley.
Well, that's a great question. I think the way it's been labeled in the legislation is greenhouse gases, so it should be including all of those. I'm not sure what, again, it's ODOT that we're relying on for that report, and I'll have to get back to you on the details of what they're measuring.
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
I think Mayor Christopher has her hand up.
I do. So on page two of your presentation, Bob, it says, "State G greenhouse gas goals: to take necessary action to begin reducing greenhouse gas emissions in order to prevent disruption to Oregon's economy and way of life." And the thing that is concerning to me, and so maybe you can fill in the blanks, is the targets in House Bill 3543, so by 2020, we're supposed to be 10 percent below 1990 levels, so 10 percent below what we were emitting 20 years ago. And by 2050, I mean, it's so hard to plan 40 years in the future, I can't even believe we're talking about 2050, but 2050, 75 percent below the goals that we had 20 years ago, and we'll have 80 percent more population. Where did these goals come from? Who are the experts that are telling us this?
Okay. Great question. Again, these are the legislative goals that were adopted by the legislature.
Please don't tell me the legislators came up with these goals.
Well, I'll tell you a little bit more. I just want to say that's where the action occurred. But the 75 to 80 percent is the recommendation out of the But the 75 to 80% is the recommendation out of the International Panel on Climate Change. And this is the comparable goals have been adopted by, I believe, 25 to 30 other states. So most other states are using this as kind of the scientific basis for setting these kind of goals. And it's what scientists believe is necessary to avoid, you know, the accelerated increase in temperature as a result of climate change.
Can you give me that name again? International what?
It's the IPCC, the International Panel on Climate Change.
You know, I hate to sound like Senator Ferrioli, but it's very difficult when we have goals coming internationally, and they're going to tell us how that's going to save our economy in Oregon.
It is a big challenge. And I think the thing I try to emphasize is, they are broad, long-term goals. And we think the purpose of scenario planning, at least in the context that we're pursuing it now, is to estimate what it would take and look at the costs and benefits. I think that does two things. Helps us inform what it would take and what it would cost to get there, and what the compromises are that we face. And I think it informs the legislature, so that if they can say, yes, this is an important goal, is our changes to land use and transportation the best way to get there? Are there more cost-effective ways to get there? So it's really exploring what it would take and what the consequences are.
Okay, we have a couple of questions sort of in line here. The gentleman from Kaiser in the corner, I'm sorry.
Brandon?
The counselor, Brandon, did you have your hand up?
No, nobody's up.
Oh, all right. Okay, then Counselor Rich Clausen, and then you, and then you. Okay.
So, Rich Clausen from Ward 4 in Salem. I just want to make sure I'm totally clear on this. So I understand we're not required to do the rule target setting? That's what it's called, right? And I just, I'm a little, I mean, I understand, I guess we're more here for information purposes, right? And we're not necessarily here, you're not necessarily here asking us to do target setting necessarily as Salem-Kaiser. So the question, I guess, for me is, I mean, I don't know, I guess I just have a hard time with this, because, I mean, a study like this would be really expensive, and it'd be long-term, and it'd be, like Mayor Christopher mentioned, you know, what happens? We do a study or anything now, and we try and do too much now, and then 30 years from now, it doesn't even matter anymore. I'm just, I struggle with this. And I don't know how applicable this is to what we're doing now, and what we're doing in our process of day-to-day decision-making. And could you maybe help to bring some application to our day-to-day process here?
And Bob, can you speak into the microphone? Everybody, speak into the microphone, and we'll get your recorded message. Thanks.
Thank you. I think this is not unlike what businesses do, when they look into the future and say, "How do we position ourselves, given that there are things that we don't control?" And again, if you go back to the report on how Oregon's climate is expected to change, it's something that we have to deal with. And if you think more broadly about that, and the need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, or think about it from the context of just the energy prices that we're facing, that it provides us with information to make better decisions. And there's a good chance that we will have to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and I think we want to make informed decisions about that. And again, the other thing I'd say is, think about the things that we've done so far that move us in the right direction. And finally, again, think about, we think about scenario planning about being more than just greenhouse gas emissions reductions. How do we achieve that in a way that does other things that our communities want to do? So I think we ought to build it around, what kind of economic development opportunities do we want to provide? And how do we provide infrastructure? So those are our big questions that we need to wrestle with. It's just adding one more consideration to that.
Counselor Taylor had the next question.
Thank you. I'm going to be a little bit of an old curmudgeon here. On my way down here today, I got in a huge traffic jam behind all the people looking to go across the bridge. I've seen statistics on how much gas and how much emissions come from people waiting in long lines. It's astronomical. You have the same problem at times at the Woodburn interchange. We have the problem with not having a third bridge. I see this as a wish list. We're not able to fund these things right now. And I think our efforts should be to do the things that we can now, and try and find the funding. The other issue I had was, a huge amount of energy is wasted through houses that aren't properly insulated. Now, that's a way that saves the consumer money, it saves a huge amount of emissions. You don't have near the electricity or gas or anything that would have to be used. Yet I don't see any programs locally on the state level that helps that. Now, it may be beyond the scope we're talking about here, but I think it's something that at least the legislature should look at, because I think that would do more to reduce greenhouse gases than worrying about transportation.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brad Nanki, Salem City Council, Ward 3. We've had problems with planning in the past in regards to the TPR and what have you. We have no control over mass transit in our city. If we, in fact, aren't required to do anything, I would urge Salem to do nothing. We're cutting people every year. You can say, "Well, there's grant funds that can do this," but the state's cutting everywhere. If it's Fed money, they're broke totally. Why would anyone do this if they weren't mandated to do it? And then speaking of mandated, when will it actually be mandated? Because if there's policies, it will eventually come to us. No regulation stays static over time.
Well, the reason there was a scenario planning funding report is to, and it is a report to the legislature, is an expectation from local governments that if there was a mandate to do this, that there would be funding to come along with it. So I think that's part of the answer. When it might be required, I think that, at this point, it's really up to the legislature. And maybe Counselor Clem could comment further on that. But I think the expectation was, we would take this one step at a time. And the role of targets is to say, "Well, if we were going to do scenario planning, what would we be asking of local governments to look at?" As kind of a first step to help inform the next steps that might be taken.
And I may, if I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm all for pollution prevention, wherever practical. I'm not for spending a lot of money for something that, in my opinion, truly isn't science yet. And we have contradictory opinions all the way through. We have people from the international panel saying that we've manipulated data to get certain things. We see all these red dots. Some people will say we're moving towards global cooling, some will say global warming. I hesitate to guess how much money we've spent through just the ODOT, you know, and the other list of people putting together front-end program as well, knowing what we're doing financially, economically across the state. So I'll lobby the legislature to at least back off on it for now, if that's an option.
Actually, can I, if I can just weigh in?
Oh, okay.
I just want to let you know, we did talk with the Eugene Springfield area on Thursday, and some of your concerns are shared down there. The Rule Making Advisory Committee have talked a lot about your similar concerns. And so, and as Bob had said, this is a place to start. And I guess one of the things that maybe didn't come through really clear in Bob's presentation, perhaps it did, but I want to emphasize, is that there is an adaptive management aspect to this rule that's different, in that this is a place to start, and then we'll be learning as we're moving forward, what's working, what's not working, what adjustments do we need to be making? And so that's a little bit different in terms of this rule than others. But it's, healthy skepticism is important, and we're, there's a lot of that at the Rule Making Advisory Committee as well. So you're not alone.
Okay, Counselor Dickey, and then Counselor Collier.
Thank you, Mayor. You kind of touched on this when you answered Counselor Clausen's question, but one of the things that really sticks out to me is that if and when we get to making these changes, and as you're doing your scenarios, there will be business that, or people's livelihood that will change or be significantly reduced. And how can, or do you have an idea or be more specific about how you can build that back into the scenario, so that should someone's livelihood be reduced, how, you know, what are the steps to say, "Okay, here is something else, here's something additional that you can do instead," or "You can transition to something else"? Does that make sense?
I think so. Again, remember that this isn't changing plans or zoning at this time. This is really looking into the future in the same way, I mean, it's looking at the same horizon that your plans currently look at, out to 2035, and saying, "How would we accommodate future population and housing?" So it's looking at different ways to do that, that, as Counselor Clem says, that would reduce vehicle miles traveled, and looking at the benefits and costs of that. So I think it's a process to evaluate what the impacts would be, both good and bad. So it isn't immediately answering those questions, but it's a process, I think, to answer those questions.
Okay, Counselor Collier?
Thank you. Counselor Mark Collier with the City of Kaiser. One thing I haven't heard yet is, how are we engaging school districts? Substantial users of petroleum, you know, fossil fuels. I was reading some of your information, it talks about, you know, it used to be 50% of the folks walked to school, now it's about 13%. Schools tend to be much larger, larger campuses, they tend to be farther out, all requiring less walking in our, today, in today's mind, and more use of vehicles. Larger buildings require larger campuses, more, more. And I think back to, a couple of years ago, a substantial amount of money, for example, was put into coming school in Kaiser, but yet there isn't a sidewalk around that building or that campus, and the campus is about two or three times the size of the building, and it's in the middle of Kaiser. But yet there is not one sidewalk. And I'm trying to figure out, why are we doing this? And so I'd like to see, what are we doing to engage in our particular location, Salem-Kaiser Schools, in this opportunity?
I think you hit on a huge issue. It's one that our programs work on, is working with communities to look at alternatives, to design communities and neighborhoods. And neighborhood schools are obviously an important part of that, so that people can walk, so that kids can walk. I mean, you're absolutely right. There's a lot of congestion and pollution that's a result of kids being driven to and from school. That if we did a better job of planning for the way schools are laid out and connections, that would make a big difference. So I think that's, and that's something that a lot of communities in Oregon have done, and I think is part of the solution.
Okay, how can we locally, have a follow-up question?
Yes.
How can we locally, how can I, as a city councilperson, affect that? What do we have to pass? What do we have to engage to do something other than just rhetoric?
Well, I think you're, if I'm recalling correctly, Kaiser, I think has just finished in the last year, a transportation system plan. So as Counselor Clark has indicated, you probably identified a lot of the kinds of bike and pedestrian connections that were needed. I think in other communities, there's been joint siding of school and park facilities to try to create opportunities for more neighborhood kind of design. So outreach to school districts, as they're looking at new school sites to plan those, those would be ways to do that.
Counselor Clark, and then Counselor Clem.
Thank you. Just a follow-up to what Counselor Collier was saying. Many of the things I've heard in terms of scenario planning is for new. While there was some talk about infill and so forth, and we have small pockets in Kaiser where we could do that, where we're really stuck is, even though we are a very young city, comparatively speaking, we are a very old community. And we're doing tremendous amounts, or trying to do tremendous amounts of retrofitting. And Coming School, to which you referred, is one of our oldest elementary schools, built long before Kaiser was a city. So now we're having to go back and redo entire huge lengths of streets and bring them up to the urban standards, which we require today. We occasionally get a grant to do that, but in the meantime, the kids are being driven to school because it's not safe for them to walk. So we know what we need to do. We need the dollars to do that. The school district certainly doesn't have the funds to do those improvements. We use as much as we can, we put down as many miles of sidewalk as we can. But to get to my main point is that we already know, we know that we can get kids walking, we know we can get people biking, we know we can get people to the buses. Let us build it. And that's where I get frustrated. That's more out there to the funding powers that be. But we want that ability to put those things into practice that we've already done. So, I have one question, if I may? The targets that you're looking at, are those per capita or total?
Targets will likely be expressed in per capita terms. And I think Dan mentioned this, is that we're directed in the legislation to consider population growth differences in setting these targets. And if you think back to 1990, Bend was considerably smaller. It's going to, it's estimated to more than triple in size, whereas Corvallis is going to grow by, I think, 40% is the estimate. So really, a per capita measure gives everybody a level playing field for estimating the reductions.
Thank you very much. And I really appreciate you being here today to share this with everybody.
Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Nanki.
Madam Mayor, could I defer to have Counselor Nanki go before me, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Clem. Brad Nanki, Salem City Council, Ward 3. The financing report that you said was submitted February 1st, are copies of that available for review somewhere?
Yes, they are. They're available on the web. And I think we have our webpage on one of the handouts that you received. If not, I can certainly arrange to get it to your staff, so that they can, so you can look at it.
Okay, thank you. And then one question, kind of inside of that report, the numbers that you gave out earlier, the quarter million to a million, some?
Million and a half, yes.
Does that include costs of municipality employee hours as well in developing internal plans? Or is it?
The estimate that we did for scenario planning is through selection of a preferred scenario. So it's identifying what we think that ideal or preferred future would look like in 2035. That certainly involves you and your staff in coming up with that scenario, but it's short of turning it into changes to your comprehensive plan, or zoning, or your other plans to carry that out. It's really a picture of what the future would look like, as opposed to a detailed plan.
But that's essentially what you're trying to find, is 100% of the cost of municipality or urban growth area, to create?
Create the preferred scenario, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Clem, and then Mayor Christopher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dan Clem, Counselor for Ward 8, Salem. Just a real brief, Metro has to do this because we're all watching to see how much it costs for Metro to do this before the legislators impose it upon us. Did I get that simple enough, Bob?
That's right. I think if you follow the presentation, over the next year, they'll be doing two scenarios. So the end of this year, we'll get a picture of what it's going to look like.
So that 1.5 million could change to another figure. The second point I want to bring up, this is an unfunded mandate. They may have grant funds available in the future, but again, so far, the question the legislators have struggled with is, we're not sure about this because we don't know where we're going to get the money. So that lack of financing is well-understood in this whole process for these greenhouse gas emissions. The thing that I've been asking for in representing this area is, where's the statewide strategy? Not done yet, but, you know, if the state wants this region to show leadership in reducing emissions, what's the statewide strategy? So I want Bob to just touch on that very briefly, if you could.
Again, ODOT and the Transportation Commission are working on that, and I think they expect a draft this summer, and we're supposed to complete the statewide strategy by the end of this year.
Okay. And one of my last points is, and as I've represented this region, I've said, "Look, we already have the tools in place to reduce emissions. We just need to figure out how to really finance our transit district." We can start right there, because we know that that's a struggling entity that would reduce emissions, and quite frankly, be more responsive to the community. I just want to thank the folks that we've been working with at DLCD, the director of both the LCD and the Chair of the Oregon Transportation Commission, have listened a lot to our concerns. Most of them have been vocalized here. But if the rule goes into place come 1 June, the jurisdictions, Salem, Kaiser, and Turner, need to provide written input before what date?
The April, we have a commission meeting on April 19th and 20th, so probably a week and a half before that would be the deadline for comments.
Okay, just before text.
Yes.
Counselor Smith has a question, and then we'll turn to Mayor Christopher. And unless you have a really burning question, we'll try to kind of wrap it up, because we do have another meeting to start. Counselor Smith?
I'll be very short, and actually, it's not so much a question. I was going to try to keep quiet, because I get kind of worked up about this. This causes me great heartburn, this entire discussion. From a political standpoint, from the standpoint of being an American, the bottom line for me in this entire discussion is control, and the control of the federal and state government over our lives. And when I hear words like, "We're going to have to limit miles traveled," that scares the heck out of me. And I can't stand the thought of getting to that point. And I see things, just looking through this book, that scare me to death, and then the slideshow. You had one slide, and I forget all the categories, there was four boxes, and one of them was providing... one of them was, was providing different living arrangements and promoting activity, healthy activity and reducing obesity. Not the job of the government. You used, those were alternative reasons to do this, in addition to reducing greenhouse gases? Not the job of the government, in my opinion, and I'm often in the minority on this, but reduce, reducing, I'm sorry, this, this struck me, prohibiting contracts whereby retailers vacate one building to another and prevent other retailers from reusing the vacated store. I cannot imagine how in the world that's the role of the government. That's all I had to say, I will not go any further.
That's fine, thank you. Mayor?
Bob, thanks so much, I know sometimes, I mean, you anticipated probably what the response was gonna be from local governments. We try real hard to meet the needs of the people that we serve, and certainly, this is hard to hear. And it's hard to hear that we would ever put the reduction of vehicle miles traveled ahead of jobs, it's very hard to hear that. And I think all of us would agree with you, that we want to be there with you, and you show us the money, and, you know, you got the money, honey, we got the time. But I gotta tell you, this is gonna be a hard sell, and I hope that you will take it back to the legislature, the report, that all of these unfunded mandates that they put on us, these are real people that are not working. You want vehicle miles traveled reduced? They're reduced, because these folks aren't working, they're staying in their homes. And any additional restrictions that you put on any type of economic development that could be bringing jobs to our communities is not gonna go down easy in the cities. And I don't blame you, I know you're just the messenger, thanks.
Well, I'd like to say, I second that, absolutely.
Well, I want to say, we hope that scenario planning is a way to explore avoiding those kind of impacts, and actually creating benefits for communities. So I, we're sensitive to your concerns about what, you know, kind of the harmful ways are that we might do this. I hope that we can explore ways that advance economic opportunities and reduce costs for families rather than increase. So I think we share your interest, and again, we think this is a tool that you could use to advance a lot of your interests, as well as to address this objective. And I want to say, I really appreciate the opportunity to come here, I appreciate your hard questionings and, and, you know, a little bit of criticism about this. We want to be aware of what your concerns are, and to the best we can accommodate those as we move forward.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for participating this evening, and particularly thank you to the Kaiser Chamber, excuse me, the Kaiser City Council, appreciate you coming across town and joining us, we hope we can do this sort of thing again. Thank you, thank you very much. Session is closed.
First we'll have to drive.
No.
We're going to have that. Commissioner Tessler?
Here.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Clausen?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Clem?
Here.
Commissioner Barco?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. Okay, if everyone will join me, I've asked Troop 87, Boy Scouts of America, led by Scout Master Mark Bechtel, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Scouts salute. And boys of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Thank you. Thank you very much. Our first order of business is selection of a Housing Authority Commission Vice Chair, Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, I would like to nominate Housing Authority Commissioner Thomas to Vice Chair.
Second. Are there any other nominations? Without objection, unanimous consent to name Housing Authority Commissioner Thomas, Vice Chair.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
She'll be absent next month, we can put her right to the test.
That's right, she gets the, gets the headdress. At this point, it's an opportunity for the public to comment on any items on the agenda of the Housing Authority Agenda. I have no one signed up, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on the Housing Authority Agenda this evening? All right, thank you. Counselor Nanki, could you give me a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes, I would move the consent calendar.
Counselor Clem, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Was there any questions on the program management report? Okay, great. We have no special orders of business, our unfinished business, 5A. Counselor Dickey, this is in your ward.
I'll move staff recommendation.
Second. Thank you, Counselor Clem. Any discussion? Counselor Cannon, Commissioner Cannon. Nice to see you, Commissioner Cannon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I watched last meetings proceeding on television, I wasn't here, I thought the comments of Commissioner Clausen were well taken. I have some questions of staff, if it's an appropriate time?
Certainly.
I ju, I, tell me where I'm wrong. So, I'll go step by step. We have a, we have an outstanding loan on this particular property of $4.8 million. Okay, and this is with Chase?
So, the Chase piece is $4 million?
Okay.
And then there's two smaller pieces that add up $800,000 from SHA to the partnership.
Originally, this was Washington Mutual? Washington Mutual was taken over by the FDIC and given to Chase?
Network for Oregon Affordable Housing was the initial lender, Washington Mutual refinanced them, and then was absorbed by JP Chase Morgan, yes.
Right, okay.
Could you speak up, Andy, I'm, I'm just deaf tonight.
I'm sorry.
I think you can move the microphone closer to you.
I thought I was there, is that better? Yeah, that's fine, sorry. How many units do we have at this particular Parkway Village Apartments?
124.
124. And the staff report that came out when we had the work session was that there was at least $50,000 to $75,000 worth of repairs on each one of the units.
Per unit, correct.
That's correct, okay. The proposal, as I understand it, is for us to, for the Housing Authority, to refinance the $4.8 million, and then to put an additional $50,000 to $75,000 into this facility, is that correct?
Correct, per unit, yes.
Yes, the 50 to, $50,000 to $75,000 per unit, so that's 50,000 times 124, for example.
And the average square footage per unit is 1,000 square foot.
Okay. So ballpark cowboy talk, we'll end up with $10 million of debt on a facility that doesn't have $10 million of value, based upon its rentals.
Part of the, the uses of funds is we would refinance the debt, and we would zero out the existing debt, except for perhaps part of the SHA unsecured debt, which might need to stay in, depending upon interest rate fluctuation. But the intent would be to pay off the existing debt, and then attract an additional set of new debt, which would be a little bit less than the current $4 million outstanding private debt. So we're kind of acquiring the building, and by acquiring the building, we're assuming an obligation for the project to pay off the existing debt, and then we would plan on bringing in new debt to refinance a portion of the repairs and long-term operations.
Okay. Again, round numbers, at 100 units times 50,000, that's $5 million. So even if we start out with financing only $4 million, that's, we're gonna end up with a facility at $9 million, is that not correct?
The estimated sources and uses of financing is Exhibit A, and the acquisition of the property, the total, total uses will be 13, is estimated $13,375,000. And of that, there will be under $4 million of additional debt. And the total, the total construct, or the total equity, loan and housing tax, credit equity would be additional $6.7 million. Do you have that Exhibit A by chance?
I, I looked at that on the internet during the work session, and I'm not totally familiar with what you're talking about, but let's just, again, tell me where I'm wrong. You intend to take the money that's owed to Chase, and that's $4 million.
Right.
You intend to put at least $5 million into the property on rehabilitating each one of the units with a $50,000 to $75,000 window.
Right.
That's an additional $5 million, that's $9 million. Where's that money gonna come from?
Tax credit equity, the total sources of funds to do the entire rehabilitation is $13,375. That's 6.7 million of tax credit equity, 200,000 of trust fund, some other state funds, some home funds, community development block grant funds, both in the form of low term, long-term, low-interest loans, a permanent bank loan, and I found it, I'm sorry, I was missing, of 3.7 million reserves from the existing project of 239,000, deferred developer fee from SHA would be 349,000, and the SHA contribution is that $650,000 outstanding unsecured SHA loan that's currently in the project.
Let me try to rephrase this. What I see is about $9 to $10 million of debt. Each one of the units is going to cost about $100,000, between $90 and $100,000. That's a lot of money for 100,000 square feet. I mean, you're, you're talking a huge cost per foot to rehabilitate this particular project.
The...
So, that's really not a question, that's just kind of a statement. During the work session, you had a number per square foot that Commissioner Nanki talked to you about.
Yes.
And did you come back with that square foot number?
I did, I, I did, and what I did is, we have full detailed specifications that were cost estimated by LMC Construction, who does affordable housing. I verified and stress tested those numbers with Andrew Byer from the LC Pence, he's a construction manager for LC Pence, and he also previously was a construction manager for Walsh Construction, has done hundreds of affordable housing projects, public and private, throughout the state and really the northwest and the country. And I worked with Andrew on cost reasonableness in the current market based upon his professional experience. And what we know is that our $50,000 to $74,000 per unit in Parkway brings the total cost of these units, it's 65,000 per unit when it was built, 50 to 75 takes it up to 115,000 to 140,000, which is about $125 to $130 a square foot for the average unit. And I asked Andrew about that, and his comparison is that all pre-development and all-in development costs would be about $175 foot, $175 a square foot to build a brand-new multifamily to 124 units to specific code today. Because we are rebuilding this to specific code current today, not from 1995, when the code was much differently. And he said he could, for a hard cost of $110 a square foot to $130 a square foot, he could build this project, but that's his hard cost. His site costs and his land costs would be another estimated $60 per square foot. So I, I continue to suggest that rehabilitating this property in place, when all said and done, is a $120,000 per thousand square foot unit, at $120 a foot. And to build this new, I do not believe and have not seen any evidence that we could build this for new, especially you'd add land costs in, you'd add demolition costs to take the building down, and I just do not see, in my experience, and nor do I see in my conversations with folks that have built hundreds and thousands of these units, that we can do this. We may wish it was less expensive, we have overlay of public bid law, we have overlay of Davis Bacon and Bowley, and those are just the cost, and I'm not suggesting to sway you in any way, but those are the costs that the public sector has for doing this work. And one of the points that I hope I was able to make early on is that the private sector doesn't build housing for 60 years or 30 years affordability. Private sector partners with public and nonprofits to bring equity in. But this mission-oriented housing of this nature is one that is generally only constructed in the marketplace by mission-oriented organizations, and it's generally only constructed using tax credits. There just isn't a lot, enough income in the properties to support more debt, in this case, for instance, $3.7 million.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Clem?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Andy, I want to try to put this in simple terms, so I understand, no one's gonna loan money on this property unless the City of Salem helps the Housing Authority with a $100,000 loan that Oregon Housing and Community Services wants to see, with the application for low-income housing tax credits, which we'll find out about in August.
Correct.
If we don't throw in 100K, we can't apply for low-income, income housing tax credits, and if we don't apply for low-income housing tax credits, ain't nobody gonna loan any money on this property, period, is that correct?
Very.
John, you're shaking your head.
That's correct.
So it's, it's a, we are, we are throwing a life preserver out to something that's already underwater. And that's what I think, at least I understood, potentially Commissioner Cannon was getting at, is this thing is upside down, and you were comparing it to the cost of building new. Okay, I'm not sure that's valid here, but I think the whole idea is that no one's ever gonna loan money on this property. Have we verified that? Was the property ever up for sale? Were there bank loans turned down when somebody else tried to buy it?
Right now, our debt coverage ratio on the property, and I'm gonna try to not go too far, but the debt coverage ratio, of course, is the amount of net operating income to debt service payments, and right now, this project is about 1.1. So, for every dollar of debt service, this project generates $1.10. So that's our cushion. And lenders' standard underwriting criteria today is 1.25. So we are well below the amount of cash flow in the project that a lender would even begin to think they could loan against.
And if, if I could, Mr. Chair, if the City of Salem and the Housing Authority don't go in on a low-income housing tax credit, the likelihood of the 120 residents would be what?
I think it's likely that they would, might stay in their units for some period of time, but if you're asking what happens to the property, I think the property ends up with disinvestment, and I think it ends up being an asset that the city and the Housing Authority and the residents aren't particularly pleased with, simply because there isn't the ability to leverage private investment in a project in this property.
And if we are disapproved for the OHCS application, where are we then?
Well, we...
They could say no in August, and are we at $100,000, is the first question.
Well, the, the amount of, the money that the city invests in putting an application together, those... those products of that, the products that that money generates for the application cycle would still be able to be reused in April of 2012 for the next...
We can save it for the next payment.
The next cycle.
Okay.
Application.
I want to just, thank you, Councilor Clem. I think that really clarified what the motion is. It's over $100,000 tonight, and I want to clarify with you that ultimately, the issues I think being raised by Commissioner Cannon will come back to us. Is that correct? If we're successful, you'll be back talking to us about the estimates, the bids, which will actually solidify what the actual cost is, as well as what the scope of work looks like. Is that a future decision by us?
That is, and I can assure you that we would be back to you if we weren't successful as well. There are a lot of decisions that need to be made. This puts us in the pipeline to apply for tax credits. If we were successful, then clearly there's a level of approval and oversight by the Commission before we, before we execute any construction contracts, before we create a new partnership for the tax credits. There's a whole series of legal steps that clearly the Commission has the governance authority to approve.
Okay. Commissioner Clausen.
First, I wanted to say, great report on this time around. I feel like it had a lot of information that was very helpful to understand the situation and get my head wrapped around it. Just two quick questions, since Chuck took my second one, so thank you. First one was a point of order. Last month, in addition to the loan request, you also had a policy direction on the table for us, which was to apply for these. Is that all wrapped into one?
Well, that's a really good question. I think that by approving the hundred, by the Commission requesting the $100,000 from the City Council, from the City of Salem, I think the Commission is stating its intent to preserve the housing. And there's a whole series of caveats on behalf of the Commission, specifically that there's financing available, that it's feasible, and that under the authority that you have as a governing body, you have the ability to approve that. So even if we're successful with the financing, it may not be financially feasible. Maybe interest rates go up, and maybe we're not able to support the project and reposition it the way that the Commission and the city would want us to. Then there's some real decisions there as well.
And then my last, a quick follow-up, and I appreciate that point, and I think that's a critical one for me, as far as we're going to hear this again before we move forward and before we give final approval for any work. The other question is, if we are approved for LIH, Low-Income Housing Tax Credits, are we mandated to accept them?
No, we're not. And oftentimes, as I said, there's moving parts in the real estate development, and it could be that, you know, federal funds that we're hoping to bring in as equity here is grants, home funds, for instance, community development block grant funds. Those funds are subject to a lot of political issues right now. So, you know, the project is never whole until you've got your commitments nailed down and everything is firm. And so I think there's going to be a series of iterations here that will come back to you all, where you will want to know that we've got a viable and a real project here that can stand on its own, that doesn't cause us to be coming back to this body or the city at any point in the future to fix something. We don't want to have to fix something again, and we certainly understand that the Commission and the City Council for sure would not want to be in that position either.
Commissioner Cannon.
Yes, just a comment. When, it seems that this is going to go forward. When you negotiate with Chase to pay off the loan, I don't think you should pay dollar for dollar. It's very clear as to what happened when Moishington Mutual was taken over by the FDIC. The FDIC took Moishington Mutual, gave it to Chase. Chase has no money in this game. So we should pay nothing near the $4 million, from my perspective. Anything that we pay over $1 million, I think would be absolutely wrong. Chase should actually give us this particular loan. They have no money in this, and I think that's something that we need to really understand. They have not $1 in this. And if, I would venture to say, if you could get to their books, it's been written off. So giving Chase, this is not a bailout for Chase. This is just pure profit. So, to the extent that we give money to Chase of this $4 million, anything above $1 million, I think would just be a travesty. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Clem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with Commissioner Cannon's comments, but, Andy, I'm looking to see if this is a loan, what, and maybe this is City of Salem agenda stuff, I don't know. Where it comes from, and when and how does it get paid back? I missed that, maybe it's in here, so...
It's in, excuse me, it's in both, in both reports, and...
Well, we're in the Housing Commission right now, so we're asking the City of Salem for the money, so...
Correct.
What do we promise them to pay those folks?
It would be from general thing contingency, and then we'll talk about what the security will be for the loan.
Interest-bearing deferred loan, due and payable, 48-month term.
So it's on a four-year payment?
Right.
Okay. Housing Authority will have the revenue? Given this one-to-one ratio, it sounds to me like revenue's a problem, period. Even if we had $13.3 million, how are we making payments? Are we going to have to jack double the rent?
This is, when I was, when I was hired, there were a couple things that were obvious to me about the Housing Authority assets. This is one of those projects, Parkway. I've talked to you at some point about another property called South Fair that has a little bit upside-down as well, that the Housing Authority operates. Housing Authority will need to reposition all of its assets anyway. It's kind of a, it's kind of a given, and so in four years, we will have had to reposition the assets and refinance our assets, to the point that I'm absolutely confident that there will be $100,000 to pay the city back.
Okay. Great. Any further questions? Comments? Commissioner Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just prior to the meeting, we spoke, and there was a memo or an email that was sent to a city manager in regards to that per-square-footage cost. Was that forwarded on to councilors or commissioners or...
Yes, Mr. Welch, I'm not sure. I saw a copy of it right before this meeting, but I'm not sure if it got forwarded, but we will do that, or we have the answers.
I did not forward it out to the Commission.
Okay.
I just didn't know if staff would have actually shot it to us, since I can't look at email from when I leave in the morning. And then just as we discussed that one, that 110 to 130 per-square-foot value that he was talking about earlier, isn't in fact a prevailing wage rate-based project as well? Just...
I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Welch, do you know? Is it prevailing wage?
The 110 to 130 is not prevailing. Our, our cost estimates are prevailing.
So...
So the estimate I, that I got from the private...
Right.
That would not be paying prevailing wage rates?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry. But ours, ours does. The estimates we have for the per-square-foot does include prevailing wage.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Okay. We'll return then to Councilor Dickey's motion for the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Councilor Cannon opposed, all others in favor. Motion passed. Is there any new business? And if not, I declare the Housing Authority adjourned.
It's going to be pretty wiffy gavel tonight, their day. Very interesting.
Board Member Clausen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Thomas?
Here.
Board Member Cannon?
Yes.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. Our first agenda item is reports of boards, commissions, and committees. The first person signed up, please come to the podium. State your name and address, or your ward, and introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bauer. I'm here representing the Downtown Advisory Board and the DAB Chairman, and my address, 1866 Merritt Street South in Salem. And I'm...
Welcome. Speak into the microphone. I know, you're tall and it's short, so...
Just came to offer the support of the Downtown Advisory Board as you consider the action items on your agenda. We've come to you before with discussion about the Strategic Action Plan for the downtown urban renewal district. Two items that I believe are for your review tonight are a transportation action plan and the north downtown action plan. There are, there has been a great deal of time and effort put into studying strategic action for the future of the downtown urban renewal district. One of the things that I mentioned in a previous discussion with you all was how complicated it is to take the ideas that everyone has about how to improve the downtown and handle them through the issues of transportation for the downtown area. And we, as a Downtown Advisory Board and the Subcommittee that worked on this for months and months and months, found ourselves constantly running up against issues of, if you want to take some ideas and put them into play, you have to figure out how you're going to move people around. I know that this is true of staff who work on this and Public Works, and before you is our proposal to bring in yet another professional group to study this. Not something that we're taking very lightly at Downtown Advisory Board, not something we really wanted to have as an outcome of all of our effort, and yet we don't seem to have the horsepower and the expertise internally to really give you the kind of information you need to make some decisions. And so that's why this is here. It's not because that's what, it's not because of effort. People would put in all the hours they can to make this happen, but there's, there's just not enough expertise in the community, really in the community of stakeholders that are involved, which is city staff, urban renewal agency staff, on and on and on. And so we just don't have any other choice. That's why it's there. And it's, from our perspective, a bitter pill to swallow, to hire yet another set of consultants. I will tell you that when we did hire the consultants for the Strategic Action Plan, we spent a great deal of time interviewing people, which was not something we'd done. The board actually interviewed people. We were looking for people who were going to deliver us something for real. I think they did. We would use the same diligence in this process, making sure that the people were attentive to everything that was going on in this study. There was a great deal of public interest in what you could do with the downtown related to transportation, and all of that interest had no place to go, because there just is no way that this can be done just on a whim. It's too complicated. So that's why it's here. So I, it's Valentine's Day, and I should be home with my family. Really should be home with my family, but I just wanted to offer my support of this, and on behalf of DAB, encourage you to pass this. It came through from DAB, is unanimous. Seeking your support.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bauer, for coming this evening. Are there any questions for Mr. Bauer? Councilor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jim, Happy Valentine's.
Thanks to you as well.
What's the impact if we approve the action plan, but not this, another mobility study for downtown?
Yeah. Well, it gives us a chance to get working on the action plan regardless.
Okay.
However, you immediately run in, every good idea, you run into this issue. That's why it's up before you at the same time. We sat around and tried to figure out, well, could we work on this? And the truth is, this is a, this, and this, let me get to one other point of it. We ran into this last spring. We wanted to support the water line extension. And you start looking at that, and you think, well, this is great, we're going to, we're going to do some great things, it's going to help our infrastructure, this is our mission for Downtown Advisory Board on your behalf, on and on and on. But if you don't really understand the transportation implications, you can't, you don't know where to invest. I mean, you don't know where to say, this is our priority, and we should be putting money in this direction. And if, if all of a sudden you put all that money going down this street, and you found out that really one of the most creative ideas for fixing some of the problems downtown is to go a different direction, this, this is, I mean, from our perspective, it's a potential of wasting resources.
Is this really born from an idea in DAB that turning some of our one-way streets back into two-way streets?
It is.
Would resolve a lot of the issues? Being stuck at 5:00 PM at the foot of the bridge is, is a real-world thing for some folks heading west?
It is, but it's anecdotal until you find a way to test these things through a study. And that's, one of the things that we're kind of, the reality is, is when the kind of money is at stake, that is at stake for future investment, you can't run on anecdotal information anymore. We have, we've got to get this tuned up. We really have to know, we need to know real answers, and we need to be able to take some of these ideas that constantly get discussed and say, would this work or would this not? What are we going to run into? And we don't want to be in an, I mean, this, this has the potential of being, here's the, here's the folks that are trying to listen to the downtown on one hand, let's say, DAB on your behalf, running up against the staff who are saying, no, we can't do that, we can't do that, we can't do that. And this is not good for anybody. And, and we got to a point with, for instance, the Public Works representatives, that they're saying, well, if we knew this, we might be able to help you, but we, we don't know enough either. So that's why this is a partnership.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Our next agenda item would be public comment. I see that no one has signed up on the speakers list for public comment. Is there anyone, excuse me, is there anyone here this evening who didn't sign up that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to the consent calendar. Board Member Bennett, would you like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I moved the consent calendar with a correction to the minutes of January 11th, reflecting that Board Member Clausen was present, he was present, but was not included in the minutes, and with the deletion of 4.2B. And you've all received the yellow sheet on this one.
Yes, Councilor Clem.
Are we voting on 4.3 in this consent calendar?
We are. Okay. Because I just wanted to register a no vote on 4.3A. I'm sorry, I didn't tell you ahead of time.
That's okay.
Okay.
I want to register a no vote on 4.3A.
Okay.
Why don't we, why don't we pull 4.3A?
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Sorry. And, just a second. We're getting another one here. You want to pull 4... And pull 4.3B.
Okay. 4.3A and 4.3B?
Yes, A by Clem, B by Tesla.
Okay. All right.
Everything's else fine.
Okay. So a motion has been made by Councilor Bennett to approve the consent calendar with a correction noted to the minutes of January 11, and also with the exception of by pulling item 42A and 42B.
No, 42B is deleted, and then 43A and B.
Oh, I'm sorry. 42B is deleted, and 4.3A and B are pulled from the consent calendar. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Cannon. I'm sorry.
Pardon, Madam President.
No, it's not, and we're happy to see you here. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay. We'll go to the minutes. Oh, no, we don't. That's all, excuse me. excuse me. I'm still learning. All right. Information reports.
I think--
The next thing we would do is go directly to 4.3A. All right.
And then B.
All right. 4.3A. Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Is there-- Counselor Bennett has moved to stack-- to approve the staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Cannon to approve the staff recommendation. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, we have to have a question. Is there a discussion? I'm sorry. Counselor Nanki and then Counselor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question of staff in regards to the study. And as I read certain pieces of it, I don't see a lot of heavy concrete outcomes and just kind of wanted to query on what it is we'd be getting for $180,000? And then during what timeframe would that take place? And could we actually just hire a person for a year to do that instead?
And Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, is prepared to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nanki. The study-- just for clarification, the estimated cost of the study is $300,000. It's $180,000 from the Urban Renewal Agency, which you have before you. Then there is $120,000 coming up from gas taxes, $40,000 in this agenda tonight to do some-- to fund data collection, and another $80,000 scheduled for next year. You'll see it in next year's budget proposal. This is a study that actually we in the Public Works Department have wanted to do for a number of years. We actually proposed on a Transportation Growth Management Grant a few years ago to undertake this work. We were not successful in obtaining that grant, so we were fortunate that the Downtown Advisory Board felt it was important to do, put in their strategic plan. And then urban development staff have brought it forward to fund the piece. It's funded in partnership because the study area, we believe, is actually larger than the core downtown. It actually goes all the way north to Market Street, down to Mission Street and to the-- from the river all the way west to 12th Street. The purpose of the study is to really look at a lot of the ideas that have been floated over the years. The presentation that you had at the workshop, Chris Ahes, talked about a lot of the ideas that are underway, a lot of the scenarios. What streets should be two-way, if any? Should medians be put down? Should we have angle or parallel parking? There's a whole host of issues. And what we want to do is study those scenarios, understand what the traffic impacts are of those scenarios, and then be able to move right to design and construction based on what we find in that study. And we've made that very clear in our internal discussions and with some of the discussions that we're having with the industry with respect to this issue is we want to understand-- you know, if we go to two-way traffic on State and Court or on High and Cottage or all of those, then what does that mean and what do we do to do that? There are very significant impacts to this, obviously, and significant costs associated with implementing it. Every intersection would have to be redone with respect to signalization. If we want to do medians, there's construction to doing medians. If we want to go to parallel parking, if we want to do bike lanes, all of these issues have to be understood from a traffic engineering standpoint. This is not a planning study. This is a traffic engineering study, a lot like the Bridgehead Study that led us specifically to projects. So we want this study to be the same thing, but we need to understand it. Now, that's all background in direct response to your question. This is highly specialized work. This is really a traffic engineering styled work that needs to be done. So I think it'd be better off doing it-- doing it by a specialty consultant rather than hiring someone.
Follow-up, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Nanki.
That being said, I know we have lots of studies through the course of Salem, and it's like, oh, and the Kittleson Study, and blah, blah, blah. And it's like we need to re-study that again, though, because it's been several years since we studied that last. Will the third bridge scenario be put in place for this study? Because if not, as soon as that comes in, all bets are off on its accuracy. And then secondarily, do we have money to actually build anything that the study says we should do?
In answer to your first question, it's going to be very difficult because we don't know where the third bridge is going to go. We'll have to make some assumptions. Most of these issues are really going to be operational in nature, so-- I mean, the number of people turning left or proposing to turn left from State onto High, as an example, isn't going to change much because we have a third bridge. So we can make-- we can run those scenarios and study that and make an informed decision on how we can make two-waying those streets work, as an example. So while the third bridge will still be an unknown, I think we can still do this operational study and be successful. With respect to money, what the DAB has talked about is this study will inform how investments can be made. So I don't think there's-- there's zero money allocated to these solutions or these changes today, but it may well change the aspect of the 10-year spending plan that would have to come through for projects, for the pieces inside of the urban renewal area. For the pieces outside of the urban renewal area, you know, it would wait for a future bond issue or other revenue sources to make them happen.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Bennett?
Just to speak in favor of my motion, I recall back in the '70s before they did these kind of studies, when Salem used to go through downtown street reconfiguration and redirection without studies. And it actually had become a pretty-- as I recall, there was even a board game developed because we'd see streets change one-way, return, go two-way. And it was an interesting way to try out traffic engineering, but I really recommend this study idea of Fernandez is probably the better way to go.
There are three boxes at that game up in Public Works if anybody wants to play.
Are there really? I have a copy of that game, Counselor Bennett, as well, yes.
I play it every day when I'm driving.
Counselor Clausen is next, yes?
I wanted to echo Counselor Nanki's question about the bridge crossing. I feel like that's going to have a significant impact on traffic downtown in terms of if you try and drive ferry or trade at any time in the morning or in the evening, and it's just ridiculous. Also, commercial northbound going out right past our front door over here, because that's behind me. I think that's a significant impact, and I think we need to-- it should be considered in this. I mean, it's going to-- the throughput of downtown, not necessarily traffic coming to downtown, but traffic going through, is going to be affected hugely. Second, it's just, I guess, more of a point of order, but would this-- and obviously, we're the same body and people, but would this be contingent-- would this study grant for the funds be contingent on the approval of the council for the balance of the funds?
Your-- the answer to your second question is yes. You know, without all of the funds being in place, there's really no-- we can't do a complete study. In common to your first statement, we've made it clear that there are certain streets in downtown that are workhorses and really can't be changed very much. And that's our one-way couplets. So commercial and Liberty, Trade and Ferry, Marion and Center really can't be changed. You know, we made a change from four lanes to three lanes on commercial and actually made it operate better when we repaved it. We've looked at a similar scenario for the repaving of Liberty. We can't afford three-laning Liberty like we could Commercial Street, but we did look at it. So we don't anticipate any changes to the work-- to what we call the workhorses. So the changes are-- what we've said is really every other street, State, Court, Chameca, which is already two-way, High, Church, Cottage, Winter's already two-way for the most part, are really open for the discussion. And that's where we see the bulk of the study in taking place. And then, you know, further north, you know, how do we operate Broadway and what do we do on North Front and that kind of thing? So that's why I don't think the change to the third bridge will make a lot-- Commercial and Liberty are going to still carry the brunt of the traffic, and that's not going to change. And we really can't do anything to change that. We might take a look at a couple of scenarios just to see, but we have to recognize that we have very viable historic neighborhoods that surround our downtown. So any changes that we would make that create problems downtown or transfer traffic to other streets then impact other neighborhoods. So our sense is there's nothing to be done there, but there are some nice opportunities on those other streets to do something different.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tesler?
Well, I guess I'm unhappy to hear you say that you're not going to change Liberty because, you know, when I talk to people about downtown, that's one of the first things that they bring up is that Liberty is a speedway. And basically, people just blast right through downtown. And, you know, it does not contribute to the walkability or the livability or the enjoyment of downtown to have an expressway basically going through the middle of it. So, you know, I've seen some sort of preliminary back-of-the-napkin drawings about some things that can be done on Liberty Street and also on the surrounding areas. Now, I agree that you need the money to try-- to study the traffic patterns, and I do agree with that, but I would like to see you look at some scenarios. I mean, I realize they're the workhorses. I realize there are chariots. I know we have to move people through, but I think we can think of some ways we can do that. Liberty is a major problem for downtown. I mean, we do have historic neighborhoods around downtown, and I recognize that, but we also have a really nice historic downtown where you're playing a video game to cross the street sometimes. So I'd like to see you think about that, I guess.
Yeah. Well, of course, we will. You know, the concern that we have is, you know, there's over 40,000 cars a day on Liberty Street. And on days where we have an event coming out of the conference center at 5:00, traffic's already backed up past Owens. And we see an increase in traffic on High Street. So there's really nothing to be gained to shift traffic. And there's no other options. You know, it's just-- you know, we're constrained by prior planning and topography and parks and historic neighborhoods. So we have this funnel right here. You know, that's all we have is Liberty Street. And so there's no other option. So I understand the concern about the 40,000 cars a day. We just don't have any other place to put them coming from the south. And anything that we do that constraints traffic downtown means that now we're past Owens to get traffic through downtown, and that doesn't serve the neighborhoods and doesn't serve the community. So that's the difficulty that we find ourselves in is-- so we can look at that, but, you know, as a traffic engineer, I just-- I just don't see-- we're stuck. I just don't see a good solution given all the other pieces that are in place in this community. So that's the best of the worst, is leaving that piece the way it is. I've seen some of the back-of-the-napkin designs, and they involve doing a lot of constraining to Liberty Street, which, based on the numbers we just ran, to looking at the repaving, would just further back up traffic back south of Mission Street. And that's the difficulty that we find ourselves in.
Counselor Nanki and then Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kind of in line with that, then, if we're not going to change anything with Liberty Commercial, Marion, Center, Trade and Ferry, can't do anything with the railroad tracks and 12th Street at the other end, you've basically got a box that we're going to kind of study inside, but it's constrained by the major legs of the rectangle. What do we spend in $180,000 to get then?
Yeah, there's a lot of great opportunities for State Street, two-waying State Street. And we think it's perfectly viable to look at two-waying State Street from the river to 12th Street.
How much would that cost?
To redo?
Uh-huh.
Oh, a lot. A lot. I mean, each corner with a signal would probably be $300,000, $400,000 to redo.
Just to have the signal.
But you could do the same to Court Street. We can look at High Street. There's some nice opportunities. There's some nice opportunities on Church and Cottage. So there's a lot to work on. And I don't want to-- I don't want my statements to be misinterpreted as we're coming into this study with a negative attitude. We're going into this study with a very positive attitude and are willing-- you know, we already have the most efficient system that we can get. Having a one-way system is as efficient as it gets. What we want to look is, can we pull away from, you know, this highly efficient system into a system that people have been clamoring for to see if we can do something different, to see if we can bring, you know, a different feel to all these other streets of downtown that could operate not as one-ways? But given the street system that we have in this community, not just downtown, what we've created over our entire history, there's no way to make a change. There's no real way to make a change to Liberty Commercial, Center, Marion, and Trade Ferry. They're just-- there's just no real viable solution that we can see.
And one last follow-up on that. We would have to maintain the one-way as it crosses 12th Street then to stay in line with the railroad crossings?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
That's-- or put up more gates. Yeah, or do something different. That's right.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Clem and then Counselor Cannon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can't believe I'm not supporting a transportation motion. It's got to be the first time in eight years. And I can't believe I'm not supporting something Jim Bauer has asked for. I do support it. I think we need to do it. I'm just not sure that I'm ready yet or that I understand it well enough. And I am concerned that there will be some suppositions made about what the $6 million bridge study will show or the Salem River Crossing will show. And I think I'd almost rather ask, what's the cost, Peter, if we delayed this until that study was done this fall?
Well, I think it's what Jim Bauer speaks to. You know, a lot of the ideas that the DAB and other groups have are all contingent on whether these transportation ideas work. So what I've understood is that without this study, there's really no way to move forward. I would not recommend to the council to move forward on these ideas without really understanding what their impacts are.
Yeah, I think he said--
I can't guarantee that the system will work without really knowing what-- you know, how to implement it.
Yeah, I got the impression he said they would work on other parts of the action plan.
Right.
Okay. All righty, thanks.
Counselor Cannon?
I concur with whatever-- with what everyone has said today, including Mr. Bauer. Question of city manager. Do we have the money in the urban renewal to fund this? And shouldn't this be part of the urban renewal budget that's coming up in just a few months?
There is money in the urban renewal fund, and Mr. Wells will address the specifics.
Sure. John Wells, interim director at Urban Development Department. These projects, once they're identified, there will be a process to this. If they're not in the urban renewal plan-- and keep in mind that the only projects that the Urban Renewal Agency can fund is in ones that are within the boundaries of the URA area. But with that understood, they-- if the projects aren't already in the plan, will have to be added to the plan. So there's-- there'll be a process to review it at that time. As far as the funding is concerned, we believe we've taken a look at for five years out, if these projects came in incrementally, that there would be enough money to fund them over the first-- over the next five years, based on cash on-- with cash on hand. We wouldn't have to do any additional bonding for it. Keeping in mind, the big constraint to the urban renewal funding in downtown-- in urban fund downtown is that it will pretty much be constrained on large bonding or large borrowing until the conference center's paid off in 2018.
Follow-up question, if I might.
Yes.
I know we have the money, but is it in the budget?
In this year's budget?
Yes.
It won't be-- it won't be in just for this year. It'll be over five years. It won't be-- we can't put all these projects, even if they were identified, in for one year. So over the five years, $2 million a year, you could phase these projects in.
I think, Mr. Wells, the question is the $180,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, that's doable.
I know it's doable. I know we have the money. Is it in this year's budget?
Yes.
As a line item or just a general--
Are you talking about for this current year?
Yes.
Is-- I'm going to-- yes, but I'll let Courtney explain it. Yes, it is.
Hi, good evening. Courtney Knox, project manager in urban development. We're actually asking to use some opportunity funds. And the opportunity funds are in this current year's fiscal budget for the URA. So we're just using $180,000 of that line item at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I have a question of staff. As I remember sitting on the DAB, the Downtown Advisory Board, and we talked about this study, I was also under the impression that it would help us to identify other transportation issues, other connectivity issues, transportation systems other than just cars, it would include bicycle, perhaps light rail, so on and so forth. So, could you tell me if my memory is correct or not?
Mayor, my understanding is that your memory, I wasn't at the meetings, but my understanding is that your memory is, is correct in discussions that we've had-
Uh-huh.
-with urban development staff. Uh, we, it, it, the reason I'm able to respond, that we're going to, that we're going to be able to move from planning study to design, is that we're going to, we want to really focus the study on the engineering aspects of, of, of those kinds, of those kinds of traffic engineering ideas. These other issues about a trolley, or rail, or, or these other things that are ancillary, we will probably minimize as a part of this study. Our concern is, given the budget, and given the amount of, of engineering work that needs to be done for the study, if we load it up with a lot of other issues, we're not going to get the kind of information that we, we're afraid that it will lead to another study. So, so we really want to focus it on, on the traffic engineering issues, the operational issues, first and foremost. If we get a bid for the study that's significantly lower from the engineering aspects, we can raise the profile of some of the other issues, but we want to be careful that we don't load it up with a lot of issues, and then not get the answers that we need, that, you know, that we would then lead to another study.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's what we want to be careful about.
Thank you. I, I do remember the committee, the advisory board, feeling very strongly, they, strongly that we need to look ahead to public transit, and public, other types of public transportation systems, and we need to be careful that we're not just planning for automobiles. So, if you can assure me that at some point within this plan, we will indeed incorporate public transit, whether it's trolleys, or rapid transit, or just what it is, buses, et cetera.
I, I can assure you that, that, that this, this study will include pedestrians, bicycles, and support of transit, so things like bus pullouts, or curb extensions, or those kinds of things, will absolutely be a part of this study, and the solutions that come out of it that lead us to construction will be included in that. Items such as the trolley circulator, or light rail, or enhancement of public transit, really require almost their own study and additional work, so I think there'll be, we may touch upon those, but, but there isn't enough money to address the, the traffic operational issues, and, including these other things that I said, and the transit aspects. That's really, that, that's really just going to have to wait for, for another study.
Okay, and perhaps at some point, we'll be able to partner with our public transit system, and perhaps with Kaiser, Marion County, Pope County, so on and so forth. So, that may be a further, a further step for us. Okay, thank you. All right, is there any, any further discussion on this? A motion was made and seconded to accept the staff recommendation. Do I hear, would all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay, opposed by Counselor Clem, Cannon, Nankey. That's it? Okay, motion passes, thank you. All right, we have another item that was pulled. Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion on that item?
Yes, Mayor, I, uh, I move staff recommendation on item 4.3B.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, and seconded by Counselor Cannon. Is there a discussion? Counselor, Counselor Tesler.
I'm going to go ahead and support this one, because I think it's important to Wardwood and the downtown complex, but I would like to ask that you present two scenarios in this report. One being a scenario with the existing railroad. Um, I don't want to see a report that says, "If only the railroad was gone." Um, I, I just, that's just off the table. The railroad is going to be there for a long time, so we need to see options with the railroad, with residential, with business, with getting people in the area, with no additional pedestrian crossings, um, with, with everything that's given today as-is. And then, I would like to see a section of the dreamy future without the railroad. But I really want to see the meat of this be concentrated on the as-is situation in the area, because the railroad is not going anywhere anytime soon. So, that's the only thing I would ask of this. Otherwise, I support it, and I think it's essential.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other discussion, then you would call for an issue.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Is there any further discussion? I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yes, Counselor Cannon?
I think that what Counselor Tesler has said is absolutely correct, and I would support it wholly.
All right, thank you. Counselor Nankey?
Yeah, just so that, depending again on where a third bridge might cross over, can have massive impacts to, uh, how we're going to invest in that end of town, and what it does to traffic there as well. Something to be looking for.
All right. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A question for staff. The, the last item and this item are both expenditures from the opportunity fund. Is this it? I mean, are there other pieces to this expenditure, or plan for the action plan?
Uh, we're going to have Courtney Knox from Urban Development respond to that.
Hi, Courtney Knox, again, project manager, urban development. For right now, in the downtown strategic action plan, we have identified several other projects that might come as a result of this particular study, such as an acquisition fund, and, um, other improvements. But we were hoping that the two studies, the mobility study, and this north downtown study, would speak to each other, that's why the, we were hoping they would go together, because whatever the end-use is out of the north downtown area, which we're currently envisioning to be somewhat residential, there would be a way to marry up the scenarios of increased residential with traffic circulation, and, and the impacts thereof.
Thank you, Courtney. I, I just wanted to comment that, um, I read both of them, but I didn't understand until this last item, that these were all interrelated as part of really what the DAB is recommending. I probably would have looked at it differently, but-
Okay.
-in the future, if, if there's a couple of pieces of the package moving forward, just put something in here that helps us understand that, because they're treated as separate items in here.
Yes, we'll do that.
Okay. Um, I apologize, I don't know who was first. Okay, Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Nankey.
Courtney, um, this is, just to, to be real clear, if people are watching this, this is the north downtown housing investment strategy. This is the, the heart of the north downtown plan, is housing, and how we will proceed with it. Will, um, the neighborhood association, associations, really, I guess we're looking at Highland and Grant that will be most affected, will they be part of the planning process in this?
It is our intention that they would both, all three, actually. I think we were talking about Nen as well.
And Ki, ah.
Um, because of the proximity, Nen, Grant, and Can Do, I think, is the list. Um, we were talking earlier today about including them in both studies, both the traffic circulation, the mobility study, as well as the north downtown housing study.
I would suggest that you, uh, Nen is back a little further from, from the area, but you look closely at Highland as well. They're, they're really at the boundary of this.
Thank you, I'd forgotten Highland.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nankey, and then Counselor Claussen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are we looking at one consultant to perform both studies, then, if they're interrelated, and we're going to try to be meshing pieces of them?
Counselor Nankey, we believe that the two studies require specialized skills that would prevent us from utilizing one consultant for both. So, we were planning to issue the studies separately in RFPs, full-blown RFPs, where we'd be seeking, um, response to proposals, that has a little bit longer duration of a process. But it's our intention that we would be seeking RFPs for both, and they would likely be separate consultants, and one of the tasks would include some coordination, as well as staff would be assigned to both.
Okay, and I was going to actually throw a follow-up on that. Is one necessary before the other one is finished, then?
It, it was our intention and our hope that they would be running concurrently, so that they could feed each other. We expect that the traffic circulation and mobility patterns will be related to the outcome in the housing study. What kinds of housing, what types, how much, how many, and where they would be located would influence the traffic circulation and mobility. So, we're hoping that the two would go together, and have a coordination element.
Okay, I just know it's scary when you're trying to bank on, okay, we're waiting for this piece, and you got, you know, this one not moving as fast as you want it to, and then you're slowing people down, and they're just kind of spinning their wheels and spending more of your money.
We're hoping they run concurrently.
Counselor Claussen?
Um, so, I'm going to be in support of this, but something that, uh, we lost, well, I guess Counselor Cannon's up there still. Um, the, something that I'm interested in on this is, where we kind of breezed over, as far as the public is concerned, who might be watching this, we breezed over the fact that we approved the downtown strategic action plan, which is a very comprehensive piece of information that was presented to us as a body last month, I believe. And I think it's a good piece of information that we, as a group, as the urban renewal agency, really need to stick to. And this is speaking to all the other counselors here, I guess we're not counselors here, we're board members.
We're board members, I'm sorry.
Um, I think we need to really keep it in the forefront of our heads, as Counselor, or Board Member Clem mentioned, that this is part of that package. We need to be focused on that, we need to hold staff accountable to follow up on the downtown strategic action plan, and follow through with taking these reports and using them, because we're looking at $380,000 of urban renewal agency funds here for studies. Gets us nothing on the street. So, when we get these studies back, I'd like a commitment from all of us to be reading these, watching them, and following through on them, because this is not money to be thrown around, this is the taxpayer dollars that they voted to be put into this area. So, um, again, I'm, I'm a yes on this, but it's something that I feel like we all need to be watching very closely, and be actively involved in.
Thank you, Board Member Claussen, I certainly agree with that. All right, is there any further discussion? I'm sorry.
I had a couple of comments submitted.
City Manager has a comment.
You adopted the downtown strategic action plan tonight, we had a work session about a month ago, and we've been hearing about it, but your adoption was this evening, and I absolutely agree with Board Member Claussen, that we need to bring that back, and make sure that we actually follow through with the, the next phases of the work. To Counselor, or Board Member Tesler, I wasn't sure if your comments about doing part of this study with the existing railroad and existing situation in part, assuming the railroad wasn't there was part of your motion, or a comment. My recommendation would be that we not spend too much time or money looking at it if there were no railroad there, because I don't think that's a likely scenario anytime in the probably distant future. So, so that maybe was just a comment about would there be any changes, rather than a motion, an amendment to your motion?
Uh, I, I think that I said that I'd like to see the bulk of it spent on the as-is situation with the railroad.
Okay.
That's what we understood.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, um, I'll call for the vote on the motion. The motion was in favor of accepting the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We have no unfinished business for the urban renewal board, and we have no public hearings, and no new business, so with no further items, we are adjourned. We're now going to go to the opening of the city council meeting, and, oh, excuse me, Kathy. I'm sorry. Oh.
I love the Salem City Council.
Thank you. City Council meeting of February 14, 2011 is now in session. Will the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
Present.
Counselor Nankey?
Here.
Counselor Claussen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Cannon?
Yes.
Counselor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson? Here. Thank you. Um, we're, I'm going to call for a motion to suspend the council rule 5J relating to public hearings, beginning at 7:30 PM. Counselor Bennett?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Mayor Peterson, actually, that, that public hearing tonight is just, um, continuation, uh, the staff is asking it be continued, so we didn't really have-
Oh, so I don't need this motion?
No.
Oh, all right.
I, I don't believe we do.
Oh, okay, all right.
If, if we could, though, go directly to the public hearing, and, and take care of that, and then we'll go forward with the-
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we move directly to item 8A, I think that's within the chair's prerogative. As part of that motion, I would move staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Cannon, and seconded by Counselor Clem. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, we'll open the hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Bennett, do you-
So, that item is taken care of now, and so we would go back to, um, reports from boards and commissions.
Oh, all right. Thank you for your patience, all right.
This meeting differently every time, so it's-
That's true, I'm learning to punt, that's what I'm learning. Okay, here we are.
[inaudible]
All right, okay, just a minute here, all right, I'm losing control. Okay. We have no proclamations and presentations this evening, so we'll move to reports of boards, commissions, committees, presented by outside agencies. We have guests this evening. Social Service Advisory Board, the YWCA Salem Resource Assistance Program. Will you please, uh, join us, and introduce yourself, and give your address or ward number, please?
Yes, Mayor Peterson, counselors. I'm Renee Store, 2570 Tarmigan Street, West Salem. I'd be Ward 8, I think. I am the Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission Liaison Member on the Social Services Advisory Board. The YWCA Resource Assistance Program is one of our fundees, and I'm here to introduce Kristin Ogo to give you some information about that program. He's the program manager.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, honorable members. The Resource Assistance Program at the YWCA Salem serves low-income individuals and families, and persons experiencing homelessness who reside within the city of Salem. The program provides financial assistance for Oregon Identification Card, driver's license, birth certificate, utility, bus passes upon availability of funds. If funding is unavailable through our program, we refer our clients to partnering agencies who could assist with financial assistance. But the main goal of the program is to help clients obtain permanent housing. The city of Salem's contract with the YWCA Salem Resource Assistance Program is to case-manage 140 households. Therefore, for the first two quarters of this fiscal year, the program assisted 88 households with variety of needs. However, 34 of those households were successfully placed in permanent housing, and 37 in homeless shelter located in Salem and Kaiser. The success for providing permanent housing to our low-income clientele's and families experiencing homelessness is through great partnership with key property managers in the city of Salem and Kaiser. Today, I would like to announce a new partnership with Easter Seals for providing support to our program with two personnel to assist with resume building and employment, job search for unemployed clients. This partnership will assist our clients as they strive to become self-sufficient. I would like to, uh, recognize two of my wonderful, um, case managers who have worked so hard and dedicate, and with dedication, uh, to the success of our program. They're not here today, but I would like to acknowledge Jessica McGray and Linda, uh, Linda McGray for their dedication to the program. Uh, and honorable members, I appreciate your time to hear our successes in helping to reduce- And Honorable Members, I appreciate your time to hear our successes in helping to reduce homelessness in the city of Salem. Thank you, good evening, and happy Valentine.
Thank you very much, and we do appreciate your efforts. Homelessness is a serious issue in our community, and we appreciate the work that you're doing. Were there any questions? Yes, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, sir, for a very nice concise presentation and really for all the work you guys are doing. Are we even scratching the surface in terms of the 140 cases? I mean, are there... Are we getting folks who are homeless?
Yes, like I said, for six months, and we are on the 88th household that we've assisted and 37 of those we've placed in permanent housing. So we're close to half of what the city expects us to accomplish for that fiscal... for the fiscal year. Through our contract, it shows that we have to at least have 50% of those homeless individuals be supported and assisted. So we're getting close to that number. Thank you. Good evening again.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. Our next agenda item is the Travel Salem 2009-2010 Annual Report. Angie Morris is here to speak about the report. Angie, would you please come to the podium, state your name and your address or the ward where you reside for the record, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to get set up really quick, and I'll start.
Okay, all right.
I have one. I'm okay. I'm up. Okay. Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me here this evening. I just passed out our 2009-2010 annual report. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review that. I'd like to recognize two board members that are in the room this evening. Counselor Chuck Bennett and Deputy City Manager Sean O'Day. So what I'm going to present to you this evening are the results from our '09-10 fiscal year, and I know that feels like a long time ago. It does to me, anyway, another lifetime ago. But I'm delighted to be here with you this evening to share this information. There are a lot more details that are included in the report that is before you, but I'm going to provide some additional context to that information and some other information for you this evening. The 2009-2010 fiscal year was marked by three distinct qualities: bold creativity, nimble strategy, and healthy partnerships. And as I talk to you this evening, I think you'll be able to see how those strategies really helped us thrive in 2009-2010. Travel Salem was selected as a top 100 Best Nonprofit to Work For in Oregon by Oregon Business Magazine in 2009, and we snagged the 16th best small nonprofit and 21st overall. Later in the year, we were recognized as a top 100 Best Green Company to Work For in Oregon. Travel Salem was one of only five Salem businesses recognized and the only nonprofit, ranking 80th overall. This recognition helps tell Salem's story as a green destination for recruiting green meetings and conferences and eco-conscious leisure travelers. Travel Salem received the Green Building of the Year Award for the Travel Cafe at Salem's first-ever Midland Valley Green Awards honoring sustainable business practices. It's acknowledgements like these that help create and change perceptions and redefine Salem's role as a premier destination. Travel Salem is evaluated on three primary key performance indicators, or KPIs: economic impact, TOT, and leverage. In addition to these KPIs, we track 75 program activities to monitor progress and adjust course as needed depending on visitor trends and market factors. These internal activities help guide our daily decisions to ensure we're keeping up with the market factors and leveraging our dollars for the highest and best use. The first key performance measurement is Estimated Economic Impact, or EEI. As you'll notice, in 2009, the EEI decreased 10% from the previous year. This decrease was due to three primary reasons: recessionary factors, decreased lodging rates -- discounting, in other words -- and decreased gas prices. EEI measures both day and overnight travel. Regionally, day travel accounts for 40% of overall EEI. This includes business travelers and visiting family and friends. Day travel is a very strong economic driver for Salem that shouldn't be overlooked. Travel Salem works to lengthen the visitor's stay, which means we work to turn the day traveler or the folks just passing through into an overnight when possible. This means more money is left behind with our businesses and in our communities. One of the ways we strive to lengthen the stay is to showcase the broad diversity of assets in the region and actively package up opportunities for the visitor to create a compelling case for why they should stay. In '09-10, visitors made roughly 462,000 trips to Salem, stayed 1.2 million days, and spent $131 per night on average. Over the past five years, on average, direct travel spending in the region grew $8 million and added 52 jobs annually. And while we're on the subject of jobs, tourism is considered the front door to economic development, creating both jobs... Excuse me, creating jobs both directly and indirectly right here in Salem. Businesses relocated to the Salem area are often the result of the executives' first vacationing here. That's why we work very closely with other organizations such as SEDCor and Chambers of Commerce. Am I on a time limit for this presentation?
I think we'd anticipated five minutes.
Oh, okay. Sorry, misinformation on that one. So I can stop and take questions, or I'd be happy to do whatever you would recommend.
All right. Are there questions from any of the councilors? Yes, Counselor Cannon?
Thank you for coming. This is a great report. Have a question for you that's somewhat unrelated to your annual report. Can you refresh my memory, excuse me, on how TOT funds are restricted for spending under the Salem City Charter? I'm not sure I really understand that.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for the question, Counselor Cannon. Under the Salem City Charter, TOT is restricted to be spent only within Salem city limits. So businesses outside the city limits have to pay to take part of that. So we are restricted in how we can use the dollars that we receive from the city.
So one additional question. So the wine industry, for example, and our wonderful agricultural industry, both in Marion and Polk County, could not access those funds, or we could not help them encourage that tourism? Is that...
That's correct.
That's correct.
So they have to pay to play in order for us to operate in a regional fashion. And one of the things I was going to cover this evening was how important it is for us to operate in a regional fashion. Visitors don't recognize geographical or political boundaries, and so it's important for us to market the region and all the assets that are here. So we package up Salem with other things our to do: Oregon Garden Resort, Wiburn Company Stores, Wine Country, Outdoor Recreation, all those different partners, and those partners pay to take part in that. We don't spend Salem dollars on marketing them.
Okay, thank you. Doesn't sound very logical, but thank you.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to comment. I've seen the presentation before. Angie does such a wonderful job, and Travel Salem's business plan is really very good in that what's on the cover there is Polk County, if I remember correctly. And your outreach and your business model in involving communities outside of Salem really makes Salem a lot of money. Salem does not stand by itself. It's too bad it's called Travel Salem. It should be called something else, but Salem Area. But it's really because you folks leverage money from outside of Salem that really gets our TOT motel tax funds leveraged tremendously. So again, congratulations to you and your board for really making this thing work for the whole region. Those wineries are being leveraged in terms of advertising, and this region is a destination area. So we've taken that restriction, and they've actually turned it into a model that works for the whole area. So I'm very pleased with your work with the counties particularly.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, I also noticed in the annual report that you do indicate funding from other... from counties. Maybe you could describe that for a second so we would know who these other partners are that do provide funding so that you can advertise or so that you can market the wineries and the other agricultural areas.
Sure, thank you for the question. We receive lottery dollars from Marion County as well as Polk County, and Marion County dollars are about $35,000, and Polk County dollars are about $13,000. There is significant downward pressure on lottery dollars. There was recent legislation that banned smoking in restaurants and facilities like that, and that has really hurt the lottery dollars that are coming in. We also secure revenue from our memberships, our business partners around the region. We sell advertising and scholarships and things like that, and so those dollars co-mingle with... Not co-mingle, but support and leverage the city's investment. And one of the comments in the annual report was that we were able to generate for every dollar the city invested in tourism promotion, we generated another $3.5 for every dollar. And that's a really exciting ratio, and it shows that really the region is stepping up and partnering at a higher level. So we're really maximizing City of Salem's investment in tourism promotion.
Excellent. Certainly shows an effort to not only to leverage the dollars, but to show a return on the investment of those dollars as well. I think that you've been doing a good job of explaining that in your report. I appreciated the time that I had to go through your report with you and staff. It was very well presented.
We appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you. Happy Valentine's.
Thank you. Our next item agenda is public comment. The first person signed up is Sarah Beth Brennan. Would you please come to the podium, introduce yourself, and tell us what ward you are representing? And you have three minutes. There is a light there on the podium, so when you see the yellow light, you have one minute left, and then when you see the red light, your time is up.
Okay, all right. I'll make this quick. My name is Sarah Beth Brennan. I am the co-Vice Chair for the Social Service Advisory Board, and I work at 795 Winter Street Northeast in Ward 1. We did not... As an advisory board, we meant to get a letter of support in, and that did not quite happen. So I am just here in person to show my support and the board's support for Agenda Item 11.2A, Supporting the Homeless Connect Event. We see this as a really innovative approach that our city is taking. I believe we're one of the first in the nation to have a program like this. It was mirrored on a program from back east, I believe. But this is a really great way to bring services together and have individuals in our community that are experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness come together and get all of those resources in one area. And I think it's ironic that I've sat through three or four different discussions on transportation, which is obviously a big issue for many low-income individuals. And this is really great that they get to get all those services in one day. And if you haven't, as city councilors, if you hadn't had the opportunity to sit in my day job, I'm an advocate at the Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service, and I've actually been to Homeless Connect, representing my agency, and I would highly recommend you coming down and taking a look at it because it is, I think, one of the best things social services in our community does each year. So just want to support that motion, and I'm not going to stay around, so keeping my fingers crossed.
Ms. Brennan, thank you very much for coming this evening, and thank you for the work that you're doing daytime, and it sounds like daytime, nighttime, and weekend time as well. We appreciate your service to the community. I believe there are some questions for you. Counselor Tesler?
Yeah, thanks for coming down. I have a question for you regarding the budget of the Social Service Advisory Board. You do have a budget for this board, that's correct, right?
Not really. We, as a board, make recommendations on how social... on how social service dollars are spent, which is a general line item under urban development now, I think.
Okay, and so I guess I'm confused why this isn't in your recommended line item budget and why this is being pulled out independently.
And my understanding is that we have the line item budgets in our... for our advisory board that we make recommendations to council are contracts that are on a much larger scale than I'm understanding this amount is. And so that's quite an extensive application process and contracts and follow-up from the urban development staff through that. So I don't have a good answer for you on that, but it's typically a much larger grant than what this is.
Okay. I'd like to follow up on that with someone who looks helpful.
Yes?
Go ahead, Ms. Welch, and then I'll add to that.
Andy Wilch, Urban Development, happy to answer that question.
Okay, we can't hear you.
Andy Wilch, Urban Development, happy to answer that question. Let me get down here.
I'm sorry, Anne. Just speak up. Just speak up, that'll help.
Very good, I will speak up. The city allocates almost $400,000, I don't have the number right off the top of my head, a general fund to support social service delivery within the city. Social Service Advisory Board, of course, programs, makes recommendations to the city on how to program those dollars for important social service needs. The applicants apply to the Social Service Board December 15th was the application date of this past year. The Homeless Connect need was not identified at that point in time. The reality is, is that the Homeless Connect couldn't secure a site where they traditionally been. They moved to a location that was more distant that demanded additional resources for supporting their transportation, the food, and other logistical kinds of issues, and it was outside of the application site.
Okay, so they would have come through normally, but they did not because they missed an application deadline?
The city has never funded the Homeless Connect. We've had staff go and volunteer, but we've not provided direct financing to the event.
But normally, they would go through this process, the Social Services Advisory Board, correct?
Normally, one... An organization looking for general fund resources to support social service would apply to the Social Services Advisory Board. I might just differentiate this as being more of an event kind of support as opposed to a direct social service delivery, though clearly it's additive and supportive, but it wasn't contemplated at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Are there any funds left in that... Is there a fund? I'm just trying to remember if it's a fund or how it comes to us, or is it just a series of line items?
It's funding that comes from... Some from the general fund and some from federal sources. And I think Mr. Welch is going to talk about whether there is any contingency money or other funding available.
So it's substantially a general fund, and then there's the 50% service allocation from the CDBG. And those in aggregate, Community Development Block grant, and those in aggregate go to the Social Service Advisory Board for programming, not under the control physically, but are allocated for that group to make recommendations to you all. There certainly is budget available in both of those funds. But my point really that I was trying to make is generally, applications come in and applicants apply for those resources. And so we've got a series of applications that are already in that have oversubscribed the money substantially to begin with. And so we didn't feel like we would recommend to you all that we should take money away from the other applicants. That's the logic.
Counselor Bennett?
Okay. Is there a contingency fund? Is there unallocated funding? Are there $2,000 worth of unallocated funds resting in that area of the budget that could go for this project rather than go to our general fund contingency, which is just one of those, you know, I think it bothers all of us to have this come up when... if we could go to a different fund.
And I think I might...
And it may be sort of like a, you know, kind of what's the difference? Well, it makes us... Sometimes makes you feel better.
Well, and I think I might be able... The Social Service Advisory Board works in this very odd way. We have made our recommendations for funding, but it's for this next fiscal year. We have made our recommendations for funding, but it's for this next fiscal year. So then we submit, or staff submits to you a package, and that's in the line item. So no, we did not budget for contingency and ask for contingency. But if you'd all like to give the advisory board contingency fund, we would be happy to take it and put it to good use.
Is there manager?
I'm not familiar with whether there is $2,000 available in the budget, but I think, Mr. Welch, do you know the answer to that?
I'm sure there's $2,000 in the budget. Once again, it's the-
How would you describe that budget then? I mean, if the motion comes up this evening and it's either the general fund contingency or your fund-
I would think you would say the general fund allocation to social services for fiscal year, for last fiscal year.
Okay.
Counselor Clem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Sarah, apologize for dragging you through all this. You came to represent that the Social Service Advisory Board, knowing full well that it had allocated all its funds, is in support of the Homeless Connect event, and if contingency funds are available, that the board recommended that we spend them. Is that correct?
Yes, that is.
All right. And just as a matter, as long as we're talking about the counselor motion, I started with, show me if all the housing authority money has been spent. That's where we started. Then we went to the Social Service Advisory Board. The answers were both no, hence the counselor motion tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
But I'm hearing yes. That's the problem. There may have been a no in the discussion, but it sounds like you're saying, yes, there is $2,000 available.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Point of procedure. This is way off base from the public comment. I would suggest that it goes to the item that is specifically identified for it in the agenda.
All right.
I would close the discussion at this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down this evening. We'll now entertain the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar with corrections to 4.3F that were handed out on the yellow sheet.
I didn't see who seconded that. Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to accept the consent calendar with the correction to item four, that item 4.3F has been deleted from the agenda. Is that right?
Corrected.
Correct, okay.
Corrected attachment.
Oh, the correct attachment for that. Counselor Bennett? Excuse me, Counselor Cannon?
The record should show that I'll reflect a no vote on 4.2C.
All right.
Likewise, a no vote on 4.2C.
Likewise, for Clem on 4.2C.
Okay. Keep track of this.
It's three noes. That's not enough.
Three noes, okay. All right.
Never has been not enough.
All right.
We'll see you again.
Okay. Motion was made by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no special orders of business. An unfinished business. Our next agenda item is unfinished business from the January 24th meeting. Counselor Dickey, this is in your ward. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Tesler to accept the staff recommendation. Is there discussion?
I have one point to add, if I might. When we last brought this issue to city council, we talked about having adequate security for this loan, surety for the loan. Staff is still working on the form of that surety, so I would recommend that if council wants to pass this, then we would not move forward with the loan until we had finished that work for adequate surety.
Is there any further discussion? Counselor Nanki?
Should we hold that until we have that information, just to be consistent across, you know, loans to other bodies as well? Because I know we've held back waiting for that, for external agencies that don't wear similar hats.
I think the timing is, we've delayed this before, so the timing is fairly tight. We think we'll have this in a few days. And so I think if council's comfortable going forward, as long as I ensure that we have adequate surety by other property or using other funds available in the Salem Housing Authority-
Could we make a motion then, conditional upon finding that surety then, and that way we at least tie that together inside of the motion?
Right.
Okay. Is that an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, I would move that be contingent upon completion of the surety.
Second.
It was seconded by, okay, it's moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Clem. All those, is there any discussion? Now, this is on the amendment. Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The amendment carries. Now we're back to the motion. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
It's opposed by Counselor Cannon. Motion carries. Counselor Dickey, would you be able to make the motion for Agenda Item 6B? Or would you like Counselor Bennett to do that?
No, that's all right. I'm just, is this also subject to the surety? Because if it is all-
I believe this one is fine the way it is. Excuse me, I'll ask Deputy City Attorney Brady if this needs to be changed.
If 6.6B, excuse me, needs to be changed to-
To talk about adequate security.
We certainly could, yes.
Okay. Deputy City Manager?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Deputy City Manager Sean O'Dea. All this does is put the money into place so that should that adequate surety based upon the last action you took come into place, that we would have it in the right bucket, if you speak, so to speak. So I don't think this one necessarily needs to be conditioned. It could be, but it's not required.
Okay, I'll move staff recommendation.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Bennett to accept the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is regarding Resolution 2011-13. Counselor Dickey, would you like to make a motion?
We just did that one.
We've done that one. All right, thank you.
So now we're doing information reports.
I apologize. Okay. Information reports? Would any of the councilors like to address the information reports? Counselor Bennett, Counselor Tesler?
Great.
Okay, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. On information report 7C, I have a motion. I move the staff prepare an ordinance regarding unsolicited written materials to be presented to the first meeting, for first reading and public hearing to the first meeting of city council in April.
Second.
I read the staff report. It wasn't different than staff reports I've read on this before, and certainly points up issues that I think should be incorporated into any ordinance controlling the littering of our streets by folks dispersing unsolicited written materials, and I think we can do that. But I think we need to go to hearing on this. This is a real mess in, at least the neighborhoods I represent, and I know for a number of councilors in their neighborhoods. I believe it's a citywide problem. It's based on a business plan that stuffs litter into pink plastic bags and throws them in the public right of way. And I think that's gone sort of one step too far. And I think we ought to at least give the public an opportunity to come in and talk about this. They talk about it with me at every neighborhood meeting I go to. It is creating in different parts of town just a tremendous mess. This is, I think, one of the real blights in the community, in various parts of the community. It's one of the real public littering problems. The only thing even vaguely comparable is if you live on a street adjacent to a high school with an open campus and a nearby McDonald's. And that will get you just about the same effect as the Statesman Journal's policy for tossing its shopper into the public right of way. So I think we ought to take this to hearings. So I'd look for a second.
Second.
I apologize. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Tesler. I believe Counselor Cannon would like to speak?
Yes, I'm going to speak in favor of the motion. Essentially, it's not just the public right of way that's involved. I have one neighborhood association where they're actually putting it on the doorstep, and many of those folks are objecting. And whether it's an objective or inadvertent business plan associated with people who don't subscribe to the newspaper, getting things on their doorstep that they did not ask for, and this is not political material. So I think there's a distinction between if it were political material, then it's probably covered by the First Amendment. This is not political material. This is business advertisement, which is subject to regulation, not only in the public venue, but also in the private property issues. So I think we ought to have a public hearing and see what folks say. I've got at least one neighborhood association that will come in. Whether the other one or one of the other two, I don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good idea. The question I have is, what Brady brings up is this finding of a nuisance, a significant problem for the city and its citizens. Could you amend your motion to include that this council finds that it is a nuisance for the citizens and the city? And then that's kind of-
Yeah, I certainly would, that part of the finding, if there is the need for a finding, include that it is a nuisance to toss litter into my driveway.
Okay. And if the second also accepts that, then I think, does that meet what the city community enhancement officer is talking about?
Excuse me, I think it's a process issue. And Vicki Woods, would you like to address that?
I just wanted to ask the counselor to clarify the timing of your request. Our standard practice would be to have a future report that gives you the ordinance a week before you actually have first reading of the ordinance, and then the hearing would be at the following meeting. So that's a pretty tight timeframe. And we could certainly skip the future ordinance and just have the ordinance that night, but I think it may be better for the public if they have time to actually review the ordinance. So maybe if we prepare it on the, have it ready for the 1st of April, and then the hearing could be later that month? Would that work for you?
Yeah.
That would give us time.
The main thing, I don't want another report. I've seen this report, and I know what the ordinance looks like. And frankly, I was anticipating the ordinance tonight, not the report on the ordinance. So I certainly respect all the information that was contained, and I just think this gives us an opportunity to go to hearing and determine what the public's feeling is about this. You know, if this is just at the Bennett household, or just Bennett and Nanki households having a problem here, we'll find that out.
Well, we'll have the future report of the ordinance prepared for you a week before that first meeting in April, and then you can have first reading of the ordinance at first meeting in April and hearing the second.
And there's no additional motions required?
We'll go from where you give us tonight to that point.
And Mrs. Woods, could you address the issue of findings, of when we would have the information to prepare findings?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
The issue of findings that was being discussed, of when we would have the information for finding.
I'm sorry, I was buried in the process and didn't hear that question.
Madam Mayor, if I could-
Yes, Counselor Clem?
My suggestion to the maker of the motion and the second were to include in their motion that this council finds that this unsolicited written material is a nuisance.
Yes, it is.
That's the finding. I don't know that a big process with neighborhood associations needs to occur.
Yeah.
That's exactly the intent of my comment.
Yes. Okay. All right. I believe that Deputy City Manager had a point. Mr. O'Dea?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, just what the counselor said, I was going to clarify that the better practice would be to have the first reading, set the public hearing, let the public come in, explain the issues that they've experienced, and then upon adoption of the ordinance, either you can amend it, or we can certainly write it to a way that where as council finds, based upon the evidence that you hear at the hearing that evening. So it'll be in the final, prior to the final adoption of the ordinance, sometime between the hearing and second reading.
Okay. Okay.
You have a motion in the second.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler. All those in favors? Oh, I'm sorry, and you have discussion?
I was still in line for a question.
Oh, all right. I'm sorry.
And I don't know if the Bennett driveway is similar, but mine mysteriously stopped coming after the last time we talked about this.
Mine didn't.
Okay.
But yeah, I wanted to throw in the piece about findings as well as, you know, typically they land and they get rained in, and by the time I get it, it's a soggy mess. I didn't know what it was for months. And then I have to separate it because the paper part is recyclable in my, you know, mixed waste, and the other is not. So, and I'd actually picked up several from my neighbor's driveway in the course of the last couple of weeks. And basically, it just screams, "I'm not home, I'm not home, I'm not home."
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the maker of the motion, this includes also any written periodicals, any paper spam that ends up in our yards or in the right of way. So we're talking phone books, flyers, door hangers, political-
I believe it's, as it's written-
Political campaign hangers on doorknobs.
Right. That's, I think we have problems when we go into political campaigns.
That's one I want to make sure we avoid.
Right. Counselor Cannon?
Yes, that is something that would be considered during the public hearing process and the ultimate adoption, if at all, of an ordinance.
Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, just going back, that gets to the manner, time, and place of what goes into the actual ordinance then, and where we allow them to place that. And so I don't know if the item's similar to Louisville, Jefferson County Metro, is what you actually want it truly modeled against, because it's-
The reason I've chosen this Louisville one is on advice of the city attorney that this particular ordinance has been tested in court.
Okay.
And I think that these are at least delicate enough. That seems to be the general belief out there, that this represents a limitation that is not so extraordinary that it somehow interferes with a person's freedom to engage.
But I just wanted to clarify that in that ordinance, you can hang things on the door. There are several, or the porch near the door, so it could get to some of the concerns that council has, not to others, but those others haven't been challenged and survived a court proceeding.
Right. And after the public hearing, council may want to amend the draft ordinance and add something else to it.
Okay. All right. Yes.
So for clarification, it's the Louisville model that you would like this ordinance based on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and- It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to direct staff to return with a draft ordinance at the beginning of the April, in time for the April City Council meeting?
For the first City Council meeting in April, and then we would schedule the next meeting, a scheduled public hearing for the next meeting.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to ordinances. Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion to take first reading of the ordinances as a calendar?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I move we take first reading of ordinances as a calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Cannon. Is that right?
That's correct.
To take the ordinances as, to take the first reading of the ordinances as a calendar. Is there discussion? Counselor Cannon, and then Counselor Nanki.
Can we do this? City Attorney?
Yes, we can. We'll just have to read, we'll have to go through the reading of all the ordinances. But we can, we can take them as a group.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Counselor Nanki?
If I can just follow, yeah, because I'm pretty sure that the clerk actually has to read all the titles on that. So we're just going to have her read several of them in a row and have a single vote then?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's right. All right. Would you like to proceed?
Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance Bill Number 111, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located north of Center Street Northeast and west of Corden Road Northeast, 4963 Center Street.
We have to vote first on the...
To take it as a calendar.
To take it as a calendar, then we'll begin the reading.
Oh, I am sorry. All right. All those in favor of taking this, the ordinances as a calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Now, with the city recorder, please read the ordinances.
Ordinance Bill Number 111, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located north of Center Street Northeast and west of Corden Road Northeast, 4963 Center Street Northeast, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from Marion County Fire District Number One. Ordinance Bill Number 211, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 4405 Remington Place Northeast, private way, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the East Salem Service District and Marion County Fire District Number One. Ordinance Bill Number 311, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 4612 Portland Road Northeast, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the East Salem Service District and Marion County Fire District Number One. Ordinance Bill Number 411, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located south of Kubler Boulevard Southeast, east of 27th Avenue Southeast, and south of Foxhaven Drive Southeast area, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Ordinance Bill Number 511, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located north of State Street Northeast, west of Corden Road Northeast, and south of Auburn Road Northeast area, 4900 block of State Street, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the East Salem Service District and Marion County Fire District Number One. Ordinance Bill 611, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located south of Boone Road Southeast, west of 36th Avenue Southeast, and east of the Interstate 5 bypass area, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Turner Rural Fire Protection District. Ordinance Bill Number 711, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located south of Brush College Road Northwest, north of Morrell Court Northwest area, 2500 block of Brush College Road Northwest, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Ordinance Bill Number 811, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 4560 Center Street Northeast, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the East Salem Service District, Marion County Fire District Number One, and the suburban East Salem Water District. Ordinance Bill Number 911, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 4509 Corden Road Northeast, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from Marion County Fire District Number One. Ordinance Bill Number 1011, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at the 1100 block of Hoffman Road Northeast area, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the East Salem Service District and Marion County Fire District Number One. Ordinance Bill Number 1111, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at the 2200 through 2700 block of Michigan City Lane Northwest right-of-way, annexed to the city of Salem, and prescribing zoning, and providing the territory primary fire protection and EMS service from Fire Station Number 11, and secondarily from Fire Station Number 5. Ordinance Bill Number 1211, declaring and proclaiming certain territory located west and east of Fisher Road Northeast and south of Ward Drive, 4195 Fisher Road Northeast, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the East Salem Service District and Marion County Fire District Number One.
Counselor Bennett, would you make a motion to advance ordinance Bills 1-11 through 12-11 to second reading for enactment?
Madam Mayor, I move advancing ordinance bills numbers 1-11 through 12-11 to second reading for enactment.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to move the ordinance Bills 1-11 through 12-11 to second reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
All right, now we get back to discussing.
We have no second readings of ordinances, so we will move to Mayor's items. And there is no, there is no Mayor's item. And the next agenda is new business. Counselor Clem, would you please make a motion for your counselor item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that $2,000 be allocated from the general fund contingency account to support the Homeless Connect event scheduled for March 24, 2011, sponsored by Marion County Community Action Agency.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Nanki to support the, to fund $2,000 to support the Homeless Connect event. Are there, is there a discussion?
Yes. Madam Mayor, we've spoken to this quite at length already, but I would, I think it's appropriate to pick up where we left off last time, and that is to confirm the availability of housing funds versus general fund contingency funds.
Andy Wilk, Salem Housing Authority, City of Salem. I need to confirm whether we have any money or not in the general fund. And I say that because money comes back from time to time. And I do believe that we contracted some funds out that are not fully expended, that may be returning to the city. And so my answer of yes, I think there is money. I do think there's money coming back. And that's just happening very quickly. So I need to verify that if I could, please.
With that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to restate my motion that I move that $2,000 be allocated from the contingency account as designated by the city manager to support the Homeless Connect event scheduled for March 24, 2011, sponsored by Marion County Community Action Agency.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Nanki. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, just as we talk about funding, we used to get $49 a month to pay for our gas going back and forth. So it's fitting that, you know, we take what, basically the state said we had to declare it as income, and so that we would have to fill out expense reports. To date, since that happened, everybody said, "Just forget it." No one has turned in an expense report for mileage back and forth to city council meetings or neighborhood association meetings. That's 5,400 bucks a year that we just gave back to the city because it's a pain in the rear to fill out expense reports. And I like the idea of, I used to give mine away. I used to buy back people's signs downtown because that's what it's meant for. And so this is a wonderful opportunity to use what could have been that money for something good that's happening in the community. So I'm all for this one.
Thank you, Counselor Nanki. Counselor Cannon?
I'm afraid the motion went right by me. Could it be restated? What, where are we taking the money from as compared to what the original counselor's motion was?
Okay. Counselor Clem?
Yes, to the last question, the original council motion as published indicates from general fund contingency. I've restated that from the appropriate contingency fund as determined by the city manager.
Okay. And so I would look first at the money, whether there's money available in the Housing Authority budget, and then if there was not, would go to the general fund contingency.
Could I clarify really?
Excuse me, the social service advisory, social service budget.
Okay. All right. That motion has been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Nanki. Thank you very much. Although, oh, excuse me, Counselor Clem. Excuse me, Counselor Cannon.
To the extent, I'm going to vote for this. To the extent the money comes from the general fund of the city of Salem's contingency fund, I'm opposed to that. So I'll state that for the record, and I'll support the motion.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Counselor Tesler?
I'm going to follow up on what Counselor Cannon had to say, but I'd also like to voice a couple other concerns that I have. And one of them is, is that I think every single one of us as counselors and mayor have causes in our words that we would very much like $1,000 or $2,000 to go to, you know? And I, I'm not saying that any of them are better or worse than anyone else's, but the problem is, is that this does set a dangerous precedent. And the precedent is that people are going to come with these little requests, and pretty soon, we're going to be nickel and dimed with tons of these little requests for thousands and $2,000, $3,000. I support the cause. I feel the plight of the homeless community. It is terrible. I'm not saying it's not a good cause, but what I am saying is think very carefully about setting precedent. It is a dangerous slope to go down. If we, if we support this, this motion, it's a dangerous precedent to set. So do think about it. There are proper channels for people to go through. I don't understand why this isn't coming through the proper channel, but I, I don't think I can support this motion based on those two factors. Thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Yes, thank you. In regards to Counselor Tesler's comments, it would probably be a smart thing for there to be a place in the budget for a contingency. I know we have that ceremonial thing in the mayor city managers' budget, mayor city council. For those kinds, because we get the smaller things that happen throughout the year that can't be programmed by a social service advisory board because the meeting location or this event location had to change, and hence their funds weren't enough. And I know we get a couple of those a year, and if, if there's a budgeted piece that's unallocated until council allocates it, that would be a nice way to handle those in, you know, fairly small dollar amounts. But it gives us that place to house that, and when it's all gone, it's all gone, and hence there's not a concern with being hit up by a ton of people if they know the money isn't there anymore.
All right. Is there further discussion? All right. I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Okay. Counselor Tesler voted no. The motion carries. Thank you. If there's no further business to discuss, we're adjourned to an executive session.
All right.